Yeah, on, live. I would like to open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board March 13th, 2019 meeting. We're Memorial Town Hall, third floor conference room. It's a few minutes after seven. We have minutes, couple of vouchers, five pieces of correspondence from adjacent towns. We have one A&R on the schedule. And under Planning Office, we have two ZBA projects looking for commentary from the Planning Board, Palmer Lane subdivision, and then we have the view of the proposed zoning ordinances for the annual town meeting. With that, I will go to the minutes for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
If you will hear it, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 27th, 2019 as presented with any corrections.
May I second?
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the minutes of February 27th, 2019. Any discussion?
If I may?
Yeah.
Just one thing I saw. Line 118, page, I don't know, it's page three or four, line 118, just a typo. La motion.
I like that.
La motion.
I like that.
La motion.
That's what you are. We'll tell you that from now on.
La motion.
That's not bad.
That's just a typo.
Motion.
La motion.
Anything else?
I didn't see anything else. Chairman.
Anyone else?
It might have been your name.
I think that's what it was.
Seeing no more discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four yes, one absent. Moving to vouchers, we have two, one for Staples and one reimbursement to the town planner. Looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the $52.29 for Staples office supplies.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and it has been seconded to approve the Staples office supplies in the amount of $52.29. Any discussion? John, the only discussion I have is the voucher here says $59.96. Which number is it?
Typo or tax?
It would be what's on the actual invoice.
I don't have the invoice.
That would be it. Fifty-nine ninety-six. So, if we're all signing this, if I cross this out and initial it, you guys okay with that?
We have, oh, okay.
Yes, so fifty-nine ninety-six.
Fifty-nine ninety-six is the right number.
It was a coupon.
Yeah, but there shouldn't be any tax. There shouldn't be any tax, but they're showing tax. Merchandise total sixty-one.
Okay, method fifty-nine ninety-six. So, if I, is the bar right? If I cross this out and initial it and re-number it?
Yeah, and then the total would be minus the tax, whatever it is.
All right. Well, wait a minute, I don't want to.
Wait, so fifty-nine?
I don't want to subtract it. So, you have three numbers right there, twenty-three ninety-nine, eleven ninety-eight, and twenty-three ninety-nine. If you just look at the three items and skip that little order summary on the right, three items.
Gotcha.
You got your calculator, Tim?
Yeah, I'm going for it.
I think fifty-nine ninety-six is the correct number. That's it.
That's the number.
Okay.
What I'm seeing.
Do I need to change my motion?
Yeah. Yeah, withdraw that emotion and...
Withdraw the $52.29 and make it fifty-nine ninety-six.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve office supply voucher in the amount of $59.96. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We have one more voucher?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. If you hear it, I'll make a motion to approve the voucher for twenty-nine ninety-six, Department Head Meeting Provisions, twenty-nine ninety-six. Reimbursement to John Cashel. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Second?
Sorry, I'm not reading from the script, John.
May I second?
I lost the script.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve the voucher reimbursement to town planner in the amount of $29.96. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Four yes, one missing.
That's the office supply one. Sorry.
Should be.
Just happy to see you.
Hey, Rob.
Hello, Bob.
Should we have Bob's side? He wasn't here to vote on this. Tim Bob's side?
It doesn't, he doesn't need to.
All we need is three.
Yeah.
We just need the three. Three doesn't.
So, they're under correspondence, the five items.
Mr. Chairman.
Adjacent towns, Harry?
Make a motion to consider the correspondence as read?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to consider the correspondence identified on the agenda as read. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Five yes. John? All right, so now we're going to go to the A&R, ten Pine Grove Ave., lot, one lot into two. The applicant is here, come on up. And if you gentlemen would, after you have a seat, just introduce yourselves for the record, and then we'll go to John Cashell, our town planner, for a quick overview.
My name's William Holt. I'm the surveyor for the plan, head of the plan, the applicant.
Mike Alessi, one of the developers.
John?
Of course, the TV, and then we'll go back. Had the plan up there. This is a proposed two-lot A&R on Pine Grove Avenue. You can see by the overhead map, six D, parent lot twelve is to be subdivided into two lots. This proposed lot twelve A, that would consist of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen square feet, and have in excess of one hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage, which is the minimum requirement. Minimum lot size for this zoning district is fifteen thousand square feet. The parent lot would remain with, or changed to sixty thousand, sixty-three square feet, and have in excess of four hundred and twenty-eight feet of frontage. And this road is...
It's three hundred and seventy-seven, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Three seventy-seven, four twenty-eight is the total.
There it is, right there. That's the remaining frontage. This is a, considered a private way, but maintained by the town, and has been that way for quite a number of years. And there are existing homes along Pine Grove, so that's where we're at.
Pretty straightforward. Did you want to add anything?
I have, pretty straightforward, so.
All right, so bringing it to the board, any questions from anybody?
Looked like it was on all fours, my only, the only concern I had, and it's not an A&R concern. There's a well there, I saw, proposed well.
Yes.
And what's to the north, Bill?
That's the...
East, west, rather.
Camp Lysley.
Yeah, and there's no septic systems anywhere near the...
Not near the well.
It's not showing there.
It's more than, it's like one hundred feet away from the, from the actual lot line. They have town water.
You're going to be okay with the well?
Yeah.
Any reason why you wouldn't get town water? Seems to be like town water's surrounding, you know, probably.
Yeah, there's town water, the lots to the east on Pine Grove, all have water off Spofford Ave., actually. They have services off Spofford Ave.
Okay.
The ones that do have water, the ones that don't have water have wells. So, there's no water going down Pine Grove at all.
Not coming down Pine Grove.
No. And it's, there is a gas line, which is on the eastly side of Pine Grove Ave., right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, there is, there are some utilities, but not, not water.
Not a lot of room to put a whole lot more in there.
Pretty narrow, huh?
Yeah.
Any other A&R questions?
Sorry.
No problem.
Leading back to the street, as long as the way is adequate.
We're going to put the same statement on, it's not per zoning.
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, it's, it's right above there.
No determination of compliance with all zoning requirements has been made.
Okay.
It's on all fours.
Any more discussion? So, this is to endorse.
Mr. Chairman, if you will hear it, I will make a motion to endorse the A&R plan. When lots map sixty, parcels twelve and twelve A, number four and ten Pine Grove Ave., Georgetown, Mass., prepared by William G. Holt, PLS, WJS Land Survey and Design, eighty-three West Main Street, Merrimack, Mass., dated the second of March, 2019, with no revision date, consisting of one sheet of one.
May I second?
I second.
Motion has been made and it's been seconded to approve, to endorse the A&R plan entitled Plan of Lots Map Sixty, parcel twelve and twelve A, numbers four and ten Pine Grove Ave., Georgetown, Mass., prepared by William Holt, Land Surveyor and Design, eighty-three West Main Street, Merrimack, Mass., dated March second, 2019, no revision date, consisting of sheet one of one. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All set. Thank you.
Yeah, it's right here.
We'll sign it at the end.
Yeah, we'll sign it at the end, plus there's a form that needs to be executed, too. Okay. Yes.
Okay, so, moving on to Planning Office, we have fifty-five sixty-five Central Street, CVS Plaza. The ZBA is looking for input. John, you want to give us an overview of that?
Yeah.
Is that, the applicant, is that applicant? If you would come forward, please, and have a seat and just introduce yourself for the record, that would be great.
Sure. Brian Falk from Myrick O'Connell, here on behalf of the applicant, and with me is Mark Yanowitz from JD LeBrass Architects.
Nice to see you.
So, we're going to go to John first, and he's just going to give us a brief overview.
Let me give you that off the top of my head. We've dealt with this for over a year now.
Yeah.
Last year, this proposal started out as conceptual review that led to a zoning change that needed to be, needed to be passed by the annual town meeting last year, and that was to allow mixed use in the zoning district that this property is located in, which abuts the downtown zoning district, CA zoning district. What they're proposing this evening is a ZBA input to the planning board relative to a special permit they need to acquire before they come to the planning board for a special permit from the board and site plan review. They're before the ZBA on a special permit under condition six.
Buffer zone.
It's a hundred-foot buffer zone that they're subject to, and you'll see in the plan presentation that, that hundred-foot buffer zone relative to the residential abutting zoning district runs right through the middle of the building. There are no proposed changes to the building at all. This is all going to take place above the first floor, changing existing office space into seven residential units.
Okay. So, before we go to the folks, just a bit of an overview for everyone. So, we're being asked for commentary by the ZBA input, and while we can look at this in a very, very general way, we can't give any specific comments to them with regards to the project at this point in time for obvious reasons. So, with that, if in your presentation, you can simplify the presentation and make it an overview, that would probably make a lot of sense.
It'd be great if there was time that we could ask a couple of questions to, just to set up for our upcoming...
You can ask the questions, and if we can answer them to your satisfaction, great, but we mean up here.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
This is, this is one of those unique cases where I personally feel like the card is before the laws. You're going before the ZBA to get a special permit, yet in that special permit process, they may not give you the special permit. This is not a given, this is a special permit.
It's true.
But they're only coming before us tonight for a ZBA input. This is, this is not site plan review by us or a special permit.
ZBA has asked for the input, correct?
Correct.
But by providing this input from the planning board, are we condoning it or in any way influencing them?
It depends on how, it depends on how, that's why I said what I said. We cannot give anything specific, Harry, and as far as talking about, you know, the idea as a big picture, as a board member, I'm totally okay and comfortable with saying, yes, as a big picture, the idea of apartments downtown makes sense. That's all I'm prepared to say. I'm not prepared to comment on the plan, I'm not prepared to make any specific comments about anything else at this point in time for obvious reasons. And I think that, you know, I know the ZBA would like more, I would like for the board to be able to give more, but we can't until we've reviewed the application and reviewed the site plan and all of that information. You also can put ourselves in a real sticky bind if we say something, and then, for whatever reason. So, as long as it's clearly understood, we're talking about an idea, and that's it, and we're not talking about the plans, we're not talking about the execution, we're not talking about the site plan, and that all of that comes later, and it's a separate track, and separate decisions are made. I haven't seen any problems with that.
I have a question to John. They're coming, they're going to go to the zoning board just for a pre-existing non-conforming because of the buffer.
Yeah.
So, the buffer is all that we're going to talk about.
We're not really even talking about that, Tilly. We're not talking about the project in its specifics, because then we're getting into, you know, potential jeopardy of implying we're approving something, not approving something. I think we can say, they can say, here's this project, here's this idea of what we're doing, and we can say, we've got some real problems with that, and we're just going to let you know that we've got some real problems with it for this reason or that reason, but otherwise, you know, it sounds like a good idea. Good luck, go ahead.
So, on the idea that we're not giving tacit approval of this to the ZBA, but rather we're raising red flags if we were to happen to see them?
I think if you had...
It's all new to me. We've never done this before. It's all very, very new, we've never done this before.
Really?
Really.
If I may?
For the horse.
Sure. So, and again, we're before the ZBA because the building is pre-existing non-conforming with respect to the residential lot line, the hundred-foot buffer. It was fifty-foot when the building was put up, it was changed, I think, the next year to a hundred-foot, and so the building itself is pre-existing non-conforming. We're changing from one use to another, and through case law, that tells us that we need a section six special permit from the ZBA. Their standard of review is different than yours when we're before you for our special permit for the mixed use and for our site plan application for the change in use. Their standard of review is that the change from one use to the other is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, that the change from office to residential on that second floor is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. If they can make that finding, we'll get the section six special permit, and then we'll move on, and we'll be before you at a later date. And your standard of review on the special, on a special permit for the mixed use is that we meet the criteria in the bylaw and our uses in harmony with the zoning bylaw.
Which is another special permit.
It's another special permit, correct, for that use. If we, if we weren't pre-existing non-conforming, and the building itself wasn't pre-existing non-conforming with respect to the residential buffer, we wouldn't be going to the ZBA, we would be coming straight to you. But we have to go through this step because of the building.
Understood.
Right.
Understood.
I'd just like to point out, too, that I, I came in front of the board a little over a year ago, and, you know, before the town Warren article, and talked about the concept of putting second-floor residential units on top of the building, and at the time, you know, the, the planning board raised no significant issue, and, and went to the town meeting and, and was then approved. Under, the zoning change was moved to permit residential use by special permit.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to make it clear that to everybody, it's not the, it's not your project that I have these reservations about. It is the process here where this board is preempting the hearing from the ZBA and providing input to it outside of that ZBA hearing, and I believe this is the second time we've done this. I'm a little uncomfortable with the whole process, because it's new, and it's muddy waters to me.
Yeah, and I love the understanding that this was standard practice, but if, if it's not, then we won't be doing it anymore.
Okay. We got that clear?
That's all good.
We got that clear?
Yeah.
Because I agree with Harry.
I don't, you know, I just, I assume that's...
We're taking a risk.
Maybe other, other communities do it, but...
And just, just so you're all clear, we're only here because it was on your agenda, because we know the ZBA had asked for your input. If you're going to be discussing, we thought we should come. We weren't intending to make our full presentation and preempt what we'll be doing in a number of weeks for you.
I think, I think where this is, I think where this has evolved is that in the recent past, the...
Forty-B.
The Forty-B project, we were heavily involved with the ZBA in that process prior to, and I think, I think on the heels of that, the input was, was appreciated, and I think, you know, they have asked, again, for input, and so that's probably why they're here.
We also did it for Mello, his existing site last year, too. That's, I was assuming that this was normal coincidental.
Yeah, so, so, I guess, yeah, so, while they're here, I'm okay moving forward on this, and if we don't want to do this again, the board, and if that's how the board feels about that, that's fine, too. Since they're here and we have an agenda with two of these items on, you know, I'm okay proceeding and how the other members feel. And again, it's how I've expressed it, it's just, you know, presentation, it's appreciated to come to understand the project a little better, you taking time out of your night to come here and do that, and then we respond just in a general way, you know, and then say thank you.
Great.
Another way to simply look at it, it's for informational purposes only.
That's...
You know, so...
Yeah.
So, they do her aware.
Yeah. So, is the board comfortable still proceeding?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Okay. So, did you want to do a short presentation on that?
I can just give you a very brief walkthrough of what we're doing, and Mark can get into a little bit more detail with, with the changes and, you know, whatever you're comfortable with. We understand this is odd that you're, we're going to be back before you again, and just so you know, other towns where I've worked, this is not uncommon, where the ZBA will ask for planning board recommendation on a variance or a special permit, and oftentimes, the applicant will be coming back to the planning board for site plan approval, not necessarily a special permit. This is, this is odd in that regard, but that's, that's where we find ourselves, so. But John did a pretty good job of explaining, I mean, we're basically doing interior renovations to the second floor of that building, our neighbor here, to convert the existing offices into seven residential apartment units, the five two-bedrooms and two-one-bedroom. There'll really be no changes to the site itself, we have more than enough parking. There will be a, a change to the septic system that we've gone through the Board of Health with, but that's it with respect to the site. The landscaping, the parking, everything else stays essentially the same. There'll be some changes to the windows and lighting on the building itself, but, but nothing that would otherwise take up a lot of your time in site plan review. And for that reason, when we do apply for site plan approval, we will probably be looking for or asking for some waivers. It's an existing site, the site was, there was site plan approval back in 2000, and we're not really making many changes, so I don't know that you'd want drainage calc's because we're not aware of drainage issues there, and whether, you know, go through the trouble of getting brand-new drainage calc's when the site's not changing. We're hoping to seek a waiver, you know, for that. But beyond that, that's, that's pretty much it. It's an interior renovation to the second floor to change from office to residential. Mark, did you want to kind of flesh out a little bit more?
Yeah, I mean, with the build, the building, if you've visited recently, I mean, there's some deferred maintenance to it, so essentially, we were planning on changing exterior trim and re-siding the, the second floor. There'll be a few window changes. There was no change to the roof, the roof seems to be in good shape. There are gutters and downspouts that would, would be replaced as needed, but, but we were not changing the drainage system there. We would be, you know, better insulating the building and structure as, as the siding got replaced, both in, below the siding on the exterior as well as the cavity walls of the inside. With those improvements, so making it a little more energy efficient. There, it was mentioned, we are changing the septic system, there's a small patch in the asphalt drive, the tanks. I don't know if you have that...
Yeah, I didn't see that.
The location. If I may, the field right now is a raised field that's maxed out. It had been repaired in 2009, and they're doing a conventional system in, in the landscaped area there that, that's, there will be, there would be some trees coming down, we would need to do a retaining wall to level, level, but this is all in wooded landscaped area. It perked out, it's been, the septic system's been approved by the Board of Health, you know, submitted and approved, so that's, it's a conventional system that gives more capacity to the existing building.
Chairman, something? Just in the location purposes?
Yeah.
It's tough to see, is that in the slope? I'm trying to picture a lot right now.
Yeah, there is...
There's like a slope coming down?
There is a little, a bit of a slope coming down, the fire station's here, you know, we're right next to it.
A big retaining wall to the left of that.
And, and there's existing retaining wall right here, and there'd be a new retaining wall at the base, we're holding it back. The retaining wall is roughly twelve feet off the parking area, which would provide some snow storage area. Is it, there'd be some light landscaping, and that's the only landscaping change in the, on the site. So, otherwise, you know, siding, replacement, and a couple of windows, and then there's just a small cut in the asphalt, that's the only change right there, to, to basically use the existing tanks and connect to it. We would upgrade, we're changing some building lighting that's on the building, there are some pole lights out there that would stay as they are, and so it's, it's really a, you know, just kind of update, take care of some of this deferred maintenance, and really the big, the big change is the change of use of going from commercial office to residential. There is, there's an elevator in the building which kind of gives, you know, accessibility, and it, you know, one of the few probably apartments in town that you won't have to use stairs. So, you know, we think it's a, as we went through the town meeting, Warren article, you know, it seemed to get positive feedback that it's a, you know, a nice project for the community and kind of in keeping with the zoning plan.
Okay. Tilly, do you have any observations or anything you want to add?
You mentioned, you didn't have to go, you didn't mention the Concom. That's a place that you would have to go, correct?
The, the, there's no work within the buffer, the distance of...
Streamer? Right. Is that the, is that the buffer zone?
That's the wetland buffer zone. They're here, they're ten percent of us, the information. If they have to go to Conservation Commission, they will.
They will, yeah, exactly. But, but we've looked into it, and we're told we're outside.
There was a lot of flooding, bad storm, real bad storm. The water came down the hill from Ballpate all the way down, so there, so there has been in the past.
I could understand with the, with the grade and everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bob?
No, I like the idea of, you're in town.
I do, too.
Housing.
Harry?
I've been a firm believer in mixed use for a very, very long time.
There you go. Joanne?
I have no issues with questions.
I, too, I want to, I think the idea of getting apartments downtown is great. I will share with you, when you do come back for site plan, some of the issues that I'm going to be looking at is taking into account that this is now going to house people at the... their home. Right now, the site is commercial and you are going to need to do more than what I've heard in terms of making this place feel like a home, the site like a home, not just a commercial. So that means landscape, lighting, how you deal with lighting. All of these things are pedestrian scale, that kind of feeling. You have some serious drainage issues in the back, FYI. You're going to need to look into that pond, something terrible when it rains. And snow storage is going to be an issue. So those are just some things for when you do get to it, to look at.
Okay.
Other than that, the idea's great, so.
Just for the board's information, there was some work done relative to the drainage from that pond last year.
It's not working.
It's a ton of riprap and there was an overflow.
I've seen that, that's the swale, but the drainage behind the back after you go by the window where you pick up and drop off, you come around the corner, right around there, you can go fishing. It's...
In the, in the Brook on the south side can fill up in a heavy rain and...
So anyway, so you need to look at that when you get to it.
The, the location of where you're talking about, that was, that was the fishing hole?
It's in the back.
On the parking lot?
On the parking lot. It's on the, it's not parking lot at that point. It's where you're turning around, it's where service entrance is.
Right, right. I mean, there is a rear parking lot, but there, there's also like a fire lane and everything else, but...
So, so you'll, when you do your, you know, when you have existing conditions plan put together, you're going to see, it's going to need to be an updated existing conditions plan and it'll show you, I'm sure, on the topo that you've got a pond back there.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question about process from John? This, I know you're coming back to site plan approval, but site plan approval, it's also special permit for you mixed use, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a, they sort of combine them?
And we will be looking to apply and have them at the same time if the board is on plan.
Concurrently.
Right.
Concurrent sentence.
So thank you very much for taking the time to come here. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully we'll see you next month.
Hopefully we will. So the next item on the agenda is lot 46 Carlton Drive, Mello disposal. The applicant comes forward. And we actually kind of just went through the spiel of...
You did, but I've been cutting back on the words I'm going to say.
Very quick.
Try to be quick. This one's a little harder than the last to summarize, but we can do that.
Very, very much.
We can do that. Ready?
Also, if you could just introduce yourself for the records, that would be great.
Yes, thank you. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, G. Mello Disposal Corp. With me is Jason Mello and the project engineer, Scott Cameron. And we were invited to come and meet with you tonight because we have filed an application, actually two, with the Board of Appeals to propose a new transfer station on Carlton Drive. As you are probably aware, because I think we were here, discussing the current location, which is on East Main Street, that has been operated for many, many years as the town transfer station. The state regulations are such that we need to upgrade that existing facility and make some improvements to that to bring it up to code. And as we were going through that process with the Board of Appeals, with the Conservation Commission, it became apparent that perhaps an alternate location might be better, might be better for the town, might be better for Mello, it might be better received and just might be more appropriate. So Jason began the process of looking for another location. And this location became available. We looked at it, laid it out and said, wow, this could really work nicely as a brand-new facility, meet the needs going forward into the future, be code compliant right from the get-go, meet all of the zoning requirements. And so we said, all right, let's put the property under agreement, which we've done. And we have filed an application for a use special permit because a transfer station is in itself not a use permitted in any district in, under the zoning bylaw. So the Board of Appeals can grant a special permit to allow a use that's not otherwise permitted. We've also asked for a special permit in the alternative to find that this use is actually a light industrial use as that's defined under the zoning district. So however you cut it, we've asked for a special permit for the use and we've asked for a special permit under the Water Resource District. And again, reviewing this with town staff, building inspectors in agreement with that was the way to proceed. So that's what we've done. So we filed that, those applications. We have a hearing before the Board of Appeals beginning of April and we were asked to come here and get some input from you to the Board of Appeals. The property is located on Carlton Drive. It's located in the commercial C zoning district. It's about 14 and a half acres with access directly onto the site at the end of Carlton Drive, abutted by Carlton Drive and Route 95. Again, we've laid out a facility that would be a transfer station, which would include residential drop-off, recyclable area and commercial transfer station, which would be all interior. It's about a 15,000 square foot building that's proposed and we think that the layout, as Scott will go over with you, really is far superior to the layout in the current, in the current location. And we were able to take this site, which although this site has been approved for a number of industrial uses and fuel dispensary uses and things like that over the past, it hadn't been developed. So we have a site that we can really work with and start out right from, from the beginning having a compliant, dimensionally compliant, code compliant project. So I think it probably makes sense to have Scott just, since you don't want a whole lot of details, have Scott walk you through the plan so that you can get a feel for it and, and see if you have any questions, any concerns, anything, as you said to the last applicant and as I've done when I've done these reviews with you before, things that you want us to be aware of when we go forward with, with our actual site plan application. We do have in process a traffic report that's being prepared that will be submitted to the Board of Appeals prior to their hearing. So that normally comes as part of site plan approval, of course, but we're going to have that available for Board of Appeals review during their special permit deliberation. We do have wetland considerations here, so in addition to the site plan before you, we would also have an order of conditions required from the Conservation Commission once we get to that point and we get through the special permit with the Board of Appeals. So that's basically the way it will work, is Board of Appeals, then probably a simultaneous filing with you for site plan approval and Conservation Commission for order of conditions. So I'll turn it over to Scott. Was I quick?
That was great, great setup.
Chairman, could I just interrupt one second, just on the order of the Concom? I saw some delineations there. How old are they? Just, just for a question of how much it may change.
Yeah, I'll go through that with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's actually, what you're seeing in the plan, that was an old survey, which you probably saw dating back to 2001. We couldn't get out this winter and resurvey it, however, did have RMR Environmental Consulting review the wetland lines and she did take a look at that and there hadn't been much change. The new flag she put up and as soon as the weather breaks and we get back out there, we will tighten that up and get a, a brand-new survey done and all existing conditions. But we felt pretty confident as far as the land use planning aspect of it, that we had a pretty good sense of what's going on with the land. I'm just going to hit on a couple of points here that I did bring with me. This is a zoomed-out aerial image of the, of the, of the town. I want to point out the existing facility location on East Main Street. And there's Carlton Drive and here's the site here, abutting up on Interstate 95. As far as your proximity between the two, you have Penn Brook next to the existing site and the wetlands on this property really further out back, most of them, where they're holding more water and more defined. This is zoomed in, I'll bring this up a little bit, too, so you can see it just a little bit better, get a sense of what's going on in the property. A lot of it's cleared. They've been dumping, you can see that these little white dots are actually stockpiles. Okay, so they've been kind of storm refused. Access comes in through a gravel road, it comes up along the sideline and up into the site where it kind of opens up. A lot of the trees and vegetation, it's all cleared through this area. The wetland system you see on that plan runs through here, there's two fingers that come down and they converge here and they go under the ground driveway through a culvert and they head off in this direction and join up with the larger wetland system out back, which based on what those trees look like, I'm sure is enjoying some impacts from a beaver dam somewhere. But is the land, this is all lower, there's no floodplain issues, there's no flooding issues here. Everything within the development, which is up in this area, is up and away from the low, lowlands of the property. Yeah, this is a, it's a preliminary plan, right? We haven't done all the detailed engineering. I would expect we're coming back to a site plan with fully engineered site, stormwater management calculations, mass D P stormwater compliant, all that stuff. We were going through several alternatives before we got to this point. We probably looked at three or four different alternatives, different configurations, coming in here, coming in here, different ways to configure the site. We looked at a lot of different factors based on Jason's experience with, with the business, another consultant dealing with the solid waste permitting in the team. And we finally arrived at this, this configuration. One of the big factors in the driveway selection was while this, this kept most of the work out of the wetlands, it was more of a conservation point, we did have to still cross through in this area and widen it, this had a little more impact to it. This is just a much shorter run through the buffer zone of the wetlands. You can see the distance-wise, it's just, it's a lot different if I just go out. So we could reduce the actual footprint within the buffer zone, just kind of put things up at the, at the end of these little fingers that come up off the wetlands. We felt there was potential for more sensitive resources down here. We'll be looking at all that in a lot more detail. That was one of the big driving criteria in the driveway location. But as you come in off of Carlton Drive, this is a big sweeping driveway, able to accommodate a W B 65 trailer truck or at least a 65-foot-long truck. It's a 30-foot-wide driveway coming in. As the trucks come in, the heavy traffic would continue around the building in a clockwise manner. The scale is here for trucks coming in. They drive in, they back into the facility and they come out and they come back up as your way, the scale coming out and they exit. There's plenty of room here for queuing and storage of trucks. We also split the lanes here because private residential can come in here and drop off as well, either get weighed or come directly around and drop off in the facility as well. The other aspect of this and another reason why we set up in this way is we're able to really separate the private drop-off here. We're kind of clockwise circulation, but if you have private drop-off, you come in, there's oversized parking spaces, all 10 by 20 with a five-foot loading zone behind and a walkway in front, very comfortable. So don't have to worry about a lot of conflict with cars and people and try to unload 20-foot aisle coming around, so you can get a fire truck around that. And the way this would work is you come in and the, and the bins for the household waste and the recycling would be set below, so you could basically deposit into these bins. You don't have to walk up steps. It eliminates a lot of, a lot of maneuvering. So we can set this up in a manner where this, this elevation is higher and that is lower. Also helps out with loading these containers up and getting them out of there because we have direct access from more the, the heavy commercial side of it, but that's not mixing in intermingling with the residential side of it. So as you come in, you just take a left and you go right back out. So we have good separation of the, the kind of two uses on the property. What I would expect, I go through the steps, we're hoping to meet the next week or so with the Conservation Commission agent.
Yep.
To go over this with him as well, as obviously there's a lot of considerations we have to go through with respect to Wetland Protection Act. I did look at the uses of the property. We're not talking to some officials in both the state and federal government. The land use, because we were trying to figure out, is this going to be a land use with a higher potential pollutant load? Is this going to be something where we have to do extra stormwater treatment? We do have the ground, the watershed protection district considerations to make care, but no, the land use actually isn't because hazardous wastes, liquid wastes, these are not going to be permitted here. It, this is, it's residential household waste, some, some small commercial waste, but a lot of the ones you'd be really concerned about, if there's a spill or something like that, that's not allowed here. So we will be doing full stormwater compliance. All of the sorting, all of the loading, it all occurs within the building. Everything's contained. The yard attendants, probably be around three of the yard, yard attendants monitoring the waste coming in. They can send it away if it doesn't comply, but they're keeping track of all that. You'll have two operators operating equipment for moving things, loading things on the site and then you probably have a scale house attendant on site. So anywhere between four, four or five people on site at any time monitoring this. And, you know, it's, it's comfortable. There's plenty of room here. There's room to store, you know, the vehicles when they're not operating, there's room to store them here and it's secure as well, so the, the site would be gated. So in the hours when it's not open, you, you know, it's really designed to deter anybody from getting in there. And everything is hauled off the site at the end of the day, so nothing really stays on site overnight, so there's not really any opportunity for somebody to get in there and do something. So a lot of these considerations are being made into the design. I did bring the elevations and the floor plan for you. These are in the packets to the zoning board. This is the floor plan of the building, so you have a truck loading area here, this is lower, and then you have your material storage area here. So two big garage doors here, they're getting loaded into the truck, you know, so they're coming in empty and they're leaving full.
Scott, just for a frame of reference, how does that building size compare to your existing?
Existing building is 30 by 60.
Is 30 by 60 and this is what?
150 by 100.
Ah, got it. Thank you.
Much bigger.
Yep.
So they can fully operate all the equipment inside the building. There's plenty of operating room in here.
That's great.
That's the idea. The building construction, pretty straightforward, steel-framed construction. CM&amp;B put together these elevation drawings that are in the packets that you received. So the first, what we perceived as the first floor, be all concrete, it's more durable, it's designed to take a beating from trucks or, you know, equipment maybe hitting it or backing into it from occasion. You wouldn't want the metal frame coming down there because it would be ripped apart and shredded in a short time. And above that, you'd have a metal frame. They're mixing up the material types, so more translucent panels up along the roofline to allow in sunlight into the facility. Your, your metal siding here, you can see the big doors into the, the drop-off and then down lower, this is your, your roll-up bay here. And this will be looking at it from that elevation, from the highway. And then there would be a small mechanical room off of one end, probably be your bathroom there, but your mechanical systems will come in. Project will require water coming off of Carlton Drive, sewer will be through and on-site, waste water disposal system, very low flow, be a very small system, probably in the minimum size, allowed by Title V, electric, gas will be coming in. And then I just wanted to point out, too, in the, it did include a context plan in your inset, but just in the vicinity of what's around this, this is the color plan, it's a little easier clear. So you have Carlton Drive with, you know, existing developed property here. There's nothing across the street at the moment. And then you have from about the location of the building, about 1,000 feet before you get to the nearest residence through the woods, it's quite a distance away. It's up on the board now, up on the TV screen, so you can see that. So at that house, you can see north of the site, it's about 1,000 feet away from the building, through the woods. And then there are a few homes here at the intersection of Carlton Drive coming in, but again, they're, they're about 1,000 feet away as well and through, you know, through, through two industrial properties. So it's really an isolated little area. It's right off the highway, is your, your, your ramp getting off on the highway right here, right at the interchange. We think it's a great location for this and it keeps it out of the, the other more busy area, the main street. So I think that's, that's it, keeping it as short as I can.
Appreciate it.
Keep it for you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
I just care, did we invite you?
You did.
How did we do that?
To come tonight?
Yeah.
When did you invite us? Last week.
It was last week.
But, but, quick?
No, I was.
Is that what you're saying?
Well, when you, I'm just curious, I was just curious. It doesn't matter.
I think it was just last week, right? When Andrea called and wanted more plans.
But I didn't.
You're always welcome.
Absolutely, that's.
This is a fun board.
It is.
I enjoy this so much.
Speaking of a fun board, I was looking for birdhouses, but I didn't see any.
Birdhouses.
Where? What? You want birdhouses, we'll give you birdhouses.
I'm sorry. I was only joking.
Just for reference purposes, that yellow line, that does represent a thousand feet.
You're having fun with that one.
Those birdhouses would go really well along that.
All right, so.
I just have one quick question.
With that, we'll go to Joanne.
Oh, what happened to the old site? Would that be closed down eventually? Yeah.
You folks rent that, don't you?
Correct. But does it get cleaned up or like what happens to it? Or does it stay like it is?
It's a landfill.
It was, yeah, it's the old dump that's already capped. And there's some very small number of buildings that you have. There's really not, once the operation leaves, there's not much left of it. And certainly nothing as far as waste or things like that would be.
I'm assuming that.
I suspect D P W would.
I'm assuming we'll, we'll just, we'll. Maybe explain to us what happens in the end when you move, what's left, what's not.
Yeah. Yeah.
Harry?
Just, just a, what do you want to call it? A disparity between the application and the O N M plan with respect to the number of parking spots on the plant. There were four, the application said four parking places were proposed in the plan for the employees. And the O N M plan said that there were probably going to be about seven people on site. So just something to keep in mind. I don't really, not really something.
Yeah, we'll look at that, that we anticipate four to five.
Something to look at.
Yeah.
And.
We have plenty of parking area though. We need more spaces.
You probably do, you probably just need to designate it, you know, things like that. And your snow storage and things such as that. And the only other thing, it's, you'd know the answer to this. With, I remember when we were talking about the, this whole, the idea that you might not be in Georgetown at some point. The length of the road where folks to drop off on Saturdays and Sundays currently, that queue, if you will, if you'll call it that, is that comparable to this queue? Or the queue that will happen, the roadway that you have coming in now? Or will the greater efficiency of it change things?
Greater efficiency.
I mean, I'd hate to see the queue somewhere out of Carlton Drive to where it intersects one thirty-three, but.
So the biggest issue is where we are now is everyone's bottleneck's into one spot.
Exactly.
By separating the residential drop off area for household trash and recycling, that gets the cars out quicker. And then leaves more room for the trucks waiting to get on the scale instead of everyone trying to get into the one spot and get out in one spot.
Same way.
Okay, so the same amount of people will be able to use it, but they won't have to deal with that queuing anymore.
Absolutely.
It's not going to spill out onto Carlton.
Faster and.
And it won't dump out onto Carlton.
Right.
And when you come back, you'll be able to give us some information that will support what you're saying about that?
Absolutely. We have a traffic report being prepared right now. And that'll be part, obviously, of the site plan application. It'll also be discussed with the Board of Appeals. But part of this whole design, we took what we heard going through the East Main Street permitting process. Part of it was the queuing was a problem there. So how do we take care of that and not have a queuing problem here? And that's what this design takes care of. The other part was addressing issues related to noise. And the way this has been set up, we can reduce our backup alarms somewhat. Still required to have them. But the building, the way the, it's set up, the vehicles are backing up into the building. So the building acts as a block. And then thirdly, everything's inside here as far as the trucks are concerned, which we don't have, which is the problem with D E P right now. Things are not enclosed. This is all going to be enclosed here so that it addresses a lot of the issues that we heard with the existing location.
And the only other thing that would be a concern maybe later on would be what folks from Route ninety-five see. Very, very important. They're driving through Georgetown. They know it. I mean, there's big signs, this is Georgetown. Yeah. One of the first things they're going to see when they're jumping off that exit coming south, so.
You will have your opportunity at reviewing the landscaping plan once it is done. And it is an attractive industrial building. It's attractive.
I'm very concerned that it's a huge building and the way our sign by law is written is unique when it comes to area. So these are all things that concern me.
Okay.
The other thing is when you're doing your traffic study, if it does entail a thousand vehicles per day or more, that's a major no. Nowhere close.
Right.
That's good.
It does not, but yes, we're aware of that.
Sorry for your business that you're not going to get a thousand, but happy for the town that you're not. The question I have is currently residents pay at that weigh station. What's the plan here for residents to pay per bag?
I don't know if I'm following the question, like where do they pay?
I put my six bags, three bags of trash in the back with my recyclables. I drive up, I drive to the kiosk, tell them how many bags I have, I pay them and I go and I dump them. Where do I pay the?
So there'll be a separate attendant?
There you go.
In that residential drop off area?
Appliance, because it says, I think appliance, something or other.
There'll be a attendant there. And then that way he can control traffic too and let people in as parking spots open up.
Sajik, you already thought of that.
Just want to give you the opportunity.
Right there. So you pay there and then you proceed down here.
Yes.
Do you have to go back there for any reason?
And you stay in your car the whole time?
That's it.
Just how many vehicles and trucks are you going to play them? Five hundred a ton a day.
Right. Okay.
Break that down for me.
I can break it down for you. Weekdays, we're looking at trucks and cars totaling, I want to make sure I get this right. Weekday of three hundred and forty-five. And weekend was four hundred and thirty-five.
But on the weekends, we're not asking for the tonnage increase?
Right.
So the weekends is going to be status quo the way that it is right now. So that's based off of current numbers of what.
So what was, what was the weekend again?
Weekend is four thirty-five.
Okay.
And that is comparable to what you have now. And then weekday, which is where the increase in tonnage would occur, we're looking at three forty-five.
Wait, you, come again? You'd said that there's only an increase in the day one during the week?
We're only asking for the increase on weekdays for the tonnage.
Oh, it wasn't, it wasn't clear in the application. It says five hundred dollars.
Five hundred tons per day.
Five hundred tons a day.
The way that the state, the way that the state permit reads, it'll be a per day. But I'm going to make the concession that we're not going to increase on the weekends. It's that strictly for the way it runs now, the residents, people doing cleanups.
Has the Board of Appeals, are you planning on going to them as well?
Absolutely.
We'll have to, yeah.
So you haven't been yet?
No.
Okay. And then the state, are they going to?
They're aware of this.
Just aware of it, they're not?
No, I've met with them on numerous occasions. They're fully aware of what our plan is. But they're the last, they're the last step.
I would submit that documents, if you have anything from the state.
I can't apply for the permit with the state until we get local approval.
Before, until you get the permits?
Correct.
Correct.
The state doesn't issue their permits or allow us to apply first because they don't want to appear to be usurping the local authorities. So we have to get our local permits first, then we can go to the state. However, the state is very aware of this and is working with us at the current location. And we're saying we have plans pending at the current location to upgrade, but we really would prefer to do this new fully compliant site. So they're aware of what we're going through, but we can't apply or get our permits with the state until we get our special permit and our site plan approval and our order of conditions.
Could I just ask one question about that? If, if the state gives you instructions that you have to make a change, would you come back to the planning board with the change and just say, oh, by the way, for as built?
If it's, if it is something that is a change to the site plan, if they say, we want you to change it, then we have to come back and modify our site plan with you.
And I do have one other question and it's my ignorance and I apologize. B C C stands for?
So if you're.
So that's a curb around the edge. And E O P is?
Edge of pavement.
Got it.
I have one more.
I want Tilly to finish first before we start.
Yeah. I think the concern with the, with the use of this property is the trucks, the weight of the trucks and weight. I would, I would recommend that they not go through Georgetown roads. I think they should stay off and on that highway if they're huge trucks. We just don't have, we don't have the roads to carry this weight. And you're, you're saying in the application, five hundred tons a day, but that's not the weight of the truck itself. That's your garbage. So the truck is weighing so much. The garbage is another. I'd like to know the calculation of combined. If you've got a three, a three-ton truck and you're going to put X amount of garbage on it, you've added to it, the garbage. You've added to the weight. And that's your traffic study that really, you know, you need more detail.
Oh, we need the traffic study, which we're going to submit. And the numbers that I gave you are based on Jason's current operation and what he thinks he's going to have. The traffic report is going to be based on not only Jason's actual numbers, but also on I T E and the standardized numbers for this type of use. So it will, it's going to be a very good comprehensive traffic report. I hear what you're saying, that you're concerned with vehicle weight on the roadway.
As well as trucks.
Interesting.
And your traffic study should include getting onto one thirty-three.
Oh, sure.
So you'll have that all defined.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll look at that. Different roads are given different weight classifications. That's why you'll see, on occasion you'll see signs, no trucks permitted. They're not classified for that type of weight. One thirty-three, for example, you know, especially near the highway where it's state controlled, you know, they'll, they'll know what the weight limit is on that, on that road. So it's a good comment. It's a good question to raise and we'll get some information on that.
One of the other things is the concern about as those trucks are pulling off of Carlton all into one thirty-three, that could be interesting, that the whole geometry of that, I'm sure will be part of what you're studying. And I'm sure that'll be something that someone will ask in the process.
Yeah, I think this was, this was approved presumably through the subdivision process as an industrial street, Carlton Drive. It has, it has to work. We have to demonstrate that it works from the turning movements is what you're talking about.
Well, it's zoned right now as commercial, so it's not industrial. And when you started with your initial comment, you said light industry. Well, in our zoning, the light industry is a company that will make a product. Prefabrication, it goes on to spell. It's not really what you're describing right now.
Well, that's, and that's a decision that the Board of Appeals will make, whether they want to consider this as a use not specifically listed under the zoning table, which it is. Or in the alternative, they could say that it's a light industrial use. It does in fact meet the definition of light industrial use, which is very broad under the zoning bylaw. And the building inspector has acknowledged that, that it could be done either way. And that's the question for the Board of Appeals.
To go to the zoning board, that I, in my opinion, it's not. That zoning is a company that makes a product and the end result is not, it's not defined as what you're planning on doing. Plus in our zoning, the transport terminal is for two or more trucks, which shows you right there how minimum they were planning on trucks.
Well, and Mr. Chairman, I can get into the argument of the special permit requirements, which I'll be making to the Board of Appeals. I can do that now if you'd like or not.
I'd rather not.
Yeah.
Because I think it'll take place later.
Yeah, I just, I just think for the input, I'm trying to stick to the use. You know, the site approval will come with more detail and the plan was not detailed. The other thing is, is in my opinion, it should be just Georgetown residents. I don't think we need the whole New England area to collect garbage in Georgetown. I would recommend for, for our own environmental study for the water resource, that to me is very restrictive and that is detailed. And I would call, how would you know what is hazardous waste in any bag? Who is going to monitor that? How are you going to know when spills happen? I'd like to know a plan of, you know, how you're going to operate it.
So you don't have to answer that now?
No.
These questions are on the table and just have the answers when you want.
I think the hours, you've increased the hours tremendously. The ones for the residents is pretty much the same as what you're doing today. But the other hours, you've increased enormously.
There, those are more so operating hours, which were already allowed to operate at that time. It would still close early than we're operating because they stay at the end of the day to clean up and whatnot. So at least with the town right now, I believe our operating hours are six thirty to five. But we're open seven thirty to three.
Right.
Right.
And then you close on twelve to twelve o'clock.
Close at twelve on Friday, Saturday, Sunday to make sure that we can clean up.
Yeah, but what are your hours here? You have like.
We're not proposing to change them.
What I'd like to try to do, Tilly, is, because this is going on for quite a while now, what I'd like to try to do is just leave them with the questions that you have. Because we're not getting into the discussion of this project and going back and forth. They're not even in front of us yet.
Sure. I'm trying to generalize so that when John, I suppose, is going to do the letter from the plating board, that these are the areas that I would discuss, you know, and be aware of the zoning board to assist them and what they should. It's definitely their decision on the use. So I have a few more. I'm really, you know, the big one I think was the trucks and how many and the weight. And your driveway is, well, it's gravel now, right? The proposed driveway for this Canterbury, is it gravel?
Problem?
I tried to walk around, you know, I tried to drive down it, but it's.
Gravel now, yes.
Oh, it stopped here because of the snow, you couldn't move.
The existing is gravel, but that's not what's going to be used here.
I would recommend really a stronger road than even a subdivision. I would recommend maybe D O T requirement because this is a lot of weight, you know? So. That's another. I think that's about it. Okay.
So I think the traffic report has been mentioned several times. That's going to, I'm going to be looking at that closely, but we're going to probably get a second opinion on that, I'm sure. Just F Y I. The queuing that Harry mentioned as part of the traffic report is going to be important. The intersection with East Main Street, I'm sure, Scott, you'll just have some graphics that'll show us the turning templates work for the intersection with East Main. The hazardous material issue and the whole issue of stormwater treatment and the wetlands and the water resource, we'll be obviously looking at that really closely. I want to echo Harry's concern from ninety-five that, you know, it, basically what we don't want to have happen. Let me back up. I think this is a great location for the project. I'm really glad you're going here. So I think it's a win-win in many ways. What we're going to want to try to mitigate is we don't want to drive down the highway and what you see for Georgetown is this glowing ember of this. So combination of landscape and also the lighting will be very important. And the idea of using wall packs where you use those to light your, your parking areas and your turnaround areas, those are not going to, those won't be acceptable. So all of the lighting is going to have to be focused inward. And from outside of the property. And from outside of the property, you're not, we're not gonna want to see the light source itself. So, the lighting will be, I think, very important. The noise, that was interesting, how you oriented it. I think that was a great idea. Those are really the only things that I just wanted to mention right now and tell you that I think it's a great location for it. Scott, did you, did you have fun doing that? Looks like a fun drawing.
This one?
Yeah.
Well, we did about like four or five of them. I had fun doing it. I don't know if he's had some pain for it.
Well, that's a different, that's a different question. I mean, it's, you know, just when I see something like that, and it's a new kind of use or whatever for, you know, what you do, it just looked interesting. So, anyways, I diverge. So, John, you had something to say?
No, it had to do with traffic. There's, there's always been concern relative to 133. The trucks maneuvering out and taking that left turn. There's no problem they were taking right. It's, it's left.
Okay, one more from each person, if you have one, and that's it.
Sure. Where you have the residence too, why, why couldn't you put a, a building for that? I mean, you have the dumpster now. Is that's gonna be another dumpster setup?
It's gonna be compaction units.
Compaction?
Which is what we have down there right now, but a lot more of them.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be sunken down so that the, you can throw it into them.
I've seen some nice, nice drawings of other uses like this, and they would have a building, and it would be like a garage setup, where you can have your garbage, your recyclable paper, your recycled, and it wouldn't be bins, you know? That, that leaves it open for, especially the volume that you're talking about. It leaves you open for blowing around, making a mess.
Well, no, because they're fully enclosed. They have an enclosure over the opening.
Yeah.
So, that'll be an example of, you'll, you'll show some graphic images of what these things are gonna look like.
Absolutely. It's gonna be state-of-the-art, right?
You had, you had...
I, I have a question. I think it's more for John than, than anybody else. And Julian, you, you made this happen in my head. Decommissioning, is that something that would be in the, in the ZBA's permit? Or is that something that would be in, we're only doing site plan approval?
The decommissioning of the old site?
Yeah.
No, 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 of this. We can't touch that one. I don't believe we give any right to touch that one. This, should someday you decommission this, in, in the same way that...
I think that's a great question, and it should be on all of our lists, that we'll wanna have some sense of discussion about that.
But I don't know if that's us, or if that's at the ZBA level. Because do, do we have a decision, or we just have site plan approval?
You have a decision.
With site plan appro...
You are, you are, planning board is site plan approval.
Site plan approval with conditions.
Makes you, well, yeah.
Okay, then it's ZBA.
Uh, it's, ZBA would be the special permit granting.
Right, so they have the conditions, and that's why.
They're, they're granting the use.
There can be overlap on both of those.
We, we grant the site plan. Site plan technically is, that's a process by which law recognizes, court cases recognize. It's a, it's a by right situation. The special permit is granting the use, and that's the most important.
That's where the conditions would have to be then.
Because site plans, if they meet all the technical requirements for site plan review, they're not deniable.
Even though our bylaw is site plan approval.
It's, it's just a review, a, a more in-depth review of another body outside of the building inspector. That's really what site plan is. A special permit is the permit that grants them the use allowance of the property.
So, let's just make sure...
That is deniable.
So, let's just make sure during our process that we have the answer to that question.
Yeah.
And that we know how the decommissioning takes place and...
And I would like to include the, the words in our special permit to the zoning board. It will not adversely impact adjacent properties, the neighborhood, the town, or the environment. And that's, that's what you have to read for a special permit. And I'd like to put that in your little note.
Don't they have that, though? Isn't that what they're doing?
Well, I wanna bring it out again, that they remind, remind them. That's, that's what their job is.
I, if I were, let me reverse it. If I was in their shoes and I got that from the planning board, I'd go, really? You need to tell me what my job is?
Well, they're asking for recommendations.
Yeah, again, this whole process, this whole process...
But the whole process, yeah.
Befuddles me.
They have to me.
It really truly befuddles me.
But that aside, that aside, that aside, we've already talked about how we got here.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And so, we're gonna finish this one up, and I think what you've heard is, in general, people are glad that you're going to this site.
Thank you.
And the questions, a bunch of issues have been put on the table, and your next step is the ZBA.
Did you look into National Ave?
I'd like to, I'd like to, last, last question, Tilly, and then this is...
Did you, did you check out National Ave?
Yeah.
And, and the reason you're not interested in there?
It's not available.
It's not available?
It's not available right now.
Yeah.
This is the last one. This is the last question.
Okay.
Oh, the drop-off pickup trucks come around here, and do you envision them go, driving up the ramp and dropping off, or?
That's for when people come in with like furniture and stuff like that, outside of the bag.
Pickup truck and, from his project. But I mean, what's he gonna do with, what's he gonna do with the debris?
They would back into the building.
They'd back in the building. Okay, got it.
So, if anybody has any other questions, just know that this is coming back to us, and we're gonna begin at ground zero, and all of these questions can come up again, and we'll be able to have at it again. So, with that, I think we're all set. John, you all set?
I'm all set.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time. Thanks a lot. All right. We have two more items. We're a little bit behind schedule. We have Palmer Lane subdivision request to reduce surety and establish affordable housing. And... I think I'm just gonna, oh, Harry is recused, so...
So, we can continue then?
Yeah, so we can, we can continue on. He, he was recused from this meeting. So, so what we're gonna do is we'll have a brief overview from John. I assume everybody has read their packets. And then we will go to, we'll go to Tony, applicant. And then I don't see anyone in the public, but then Paul, we'll go to Paul. And then we'll bring it back to the planning board. So, it's gonna go John, Palmer Lane, Paul. And I think right now, it's not to get into back and forth right now, but it's to, you know, your piece, your history. And, and then Paul will have his questions or whatnot of his history. And then we'll bring it to the planning board for each of us to, to have our questions and whatnot, try to bring this thing to conclusion. So, with that, John, you wanna give a?
Yes, thank you. It's actually two things we're dealing with tonight, hopefully successfully for both of them. One is the request for the surety reduction.
Correct.
And that has been recommended by Dave Barger with a certain amount. So, when we get to that part of this, you know, that's included in the staff report, and I'll be able to fully explain that particular situation. The other one is the affordable housing contribution that is due for this particular project. But what I'd like to do, so everybody understands, and from the get-go, so there's no question about it. And this won't take more than two minutes, I'm suspecting. This project was approved in the spring of two thousand sixteen, and the actual construction of the project pretty much took, took place during seventeen and eighteen. Correct? Or was it, it was approved in...
It was predominantly eighteen when the construction, the, the roadwork in the, in the houses to be constructed, correct?
And the project was approved in sixteen or seventeen?
I believe it was seventeen.
Seventeen. So, I arrived in February of seventeen. I know it was already a permitted project at that point in time. And talking with Anthony and his cousin, Steve, ever since I was involved with this, we knew there was an affordable housing component involved with it. And there was talk of an actual housing unit, an affordable housing unit being produced that would be in lieu of this contribution. Am I correct? Everybody's on the same page there? Paul?
Yes and no. There, we started off, and we reuse that for three, four East Main, but then that's kinda like going nowhere in a hurry. So, I called Anthony, and he wasn't there. I left a message indicating that it was a no-go on, on using in lieu of, and that the payment would be what we'd be looking for.
Okay. Now, can I just ask a couple of questions? Because I wanna really get a feel for this. Do you have any idea, remember what dates that, you know, these discussions were going on?
I don't, but I could find out.
Okay. Was it any time during two thousand eighteen, or was this? It was during two thousand eighteen, because as I recall, it was last October that we were really trying to focus in on whether or not the developer was going to build an affordable housing unit or forego that and pay the affordable housing calculated fee. And it was in October that we tried to, you know, formalize this process and bring it forth to the planning board. And, you know, because the parties couldn't arrive at the meetings, you know, we weren't ready to go, or whatever, you know, October turned into November, December, January. And here we are finally at this point, after trying to bring all parties together since October. Here we are, March thirteenth, and this is where we sit at this particular time. There is a discrepancy of how much is actually due. And my, my original calculation was based on the language of the zoning ordinance. And that calculation, which is included in my staff report, it was originally thought to be eighty-five thousand dollars. It's not in my staff report, but...
It was in there somewhere, John.
Yeah.
Your original one.
Yeah, the original one. It was eighty-five thousand dollars. Now, based on the language of the zoning ordinance, that had to do with the, the black and white of the zoning ordinance and the four houses involved with this particular development, and the average selling price, all in accordance with the zoning ordinance, and that's the figure I came up with. That's the figure everybody agrees with. However, what happened was, and I informed the developer of that particular number. And I went to look at the decision, and I couldn't find in the planning board's file a complete decision. It was missing page five. There was not one full decision in the file. So, we ended up going down to the town clerk's office, and the interim town clerk was able to find the complete decision of the planning board, including page five. Page five is significant, because page five includes the calculation that was specific to this development, and it's a hybrid relative to the zoning ordinance. And the hybrid part of it is what I finally want to come to tonight, and it's significantly different in its total sum due than the eighty-five thousand. And everybody has a copy of this page five, and I highlighted the one particular section. And this is subsection C. The calculation for the average market sales price shall utilize the average sale price of the first two units of the Palmer Lane definitive subdivision and special permit with a dwelling unit constructed thereon. Okay, if you look at this aerial photograph, this, this is the original house that's been rehabilitated and enlarged. Okay, so this is the first house. And these two dwellings represent the two additional dwellings that are involved in this calculation. And there was one more house that is now built. This aerial doesn't show it, right here. That house is not involved with this specific calculation, only these three houses. Now, these two houses are brand-new, and they sold, and I'm just using a round figure. I have the exact figures in here, seven hundred thousand dollars apiece, okay? This house, you know, now, this is an unintended consequence, is how I explain it. This was the original house that has been completely rehabilitated and enlarged. The developer, after the approval, sold this house for two hundred and forty thousand dollars, okay? That's, that was where the total sum divided by three, multiplied by four percent, gets skewed to the lower end, so that the total calculated affordable housing component fee for this developer is significantly different to the tune of twenty-four, or twenty-one thousand dollars. Yeah, less. So, the fee that I came up with, in accordance with the specific calculation called for on page five, subcondition number C, or letter C of number one,
The decision.
is sixty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars, and that's versus the eighty-five thousand dollar fee. That's, that's what, that's what I was dealing with. So, I came up with an original fee based strictly on the zoning ordinance, and then this one came in strictly on the black and white of the decision. And it is an unintended consequence, you know? I'm sure no one ever thought that, you know, the developer's gonna sell the property for two hundred and forty thousand, as opposed to what the market was bearing at the time, and it, and it probably was five or six hundred. And, and, you know, the price of new houses jumped significantly over the last couple of years. So, that's where we're at. The one thing, and I brought this up in a conversation with the chairman going over the, tonight's agenda, is that, you know, the developer, to my knowledge or anybody else's, I don't know, didn't sell this property for anything more than two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, you know, whatever he made or didn't make on the property, that's what he sold it for. It has not been resold since it was sold, and it is what it is. And that's where I wanna leave it, and it's up to developer, Paul, and the board to, you know, discuss it further from there and decide on the matter.
And essentially, the reason, John wasn't here at the time, the reason that that house did sell at that two forty number is, you probably all recall, is that we, the, the house was deemed to have some historical significance. And from, from our standpoint, we wanted to try to cooperate with the town as much as we could. So, we, we did adhere to their, their bylaw. We tried, or their, I don't know if it's an actual bylaw, but their policy of marketing the property. And we did procure a buyer, which made the, the historic commission very happy, because we were able to sell that property to somebody who went in there and, and kept the main house, renovated it, and, you know, everybody went on their merry way. From our standpoint, from a profit standpoint, obviously, selling it at two forty doesn't, if we didn't make a dime on, on a two forty sale in Georgetown, that's barely the value of the lot. So, our effort was to try to work with the town in that respect to give the historic commission something that they could kinda hang that hat on in that location and, and just document that historic significance. So, that's where the, the two forty number came in. Obviously, if we had torn that house down and put up a brand-new house, then that's where the profit would have been made, so that we sacrificed the profit on that in order to move forward with the historic commission as well as the subdivision.
Is there anything else you wanted to add? Was John's assessment fairly?
Yeah, I think John's assessment was right on.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, you know, the timing of everything is, is right. Paul and I did talk briefly. I believe he also talked to Steve, if I'm... Paul and I did talk briefly. I believe he also talked to Steve, if I'm not mistaken, at one point. You know, all along, we, we had a sixty thousand dollar number in mind. I think even the last time I talked to Paul when we did hook up on the phone, we had, you know, discussed and, and he didn't have an actual number in his mind at the time, other than, you know, we both floated around, I think, that twenty thousand dollar times three number, which would have been in that sixty range. So that I, I, I think the calculation is fairly close to, you know, what we anticipated all along. Obviously, a little bit higher, but I'm not here to argue a five thousand dollars on a situation like that. And there was discussion about us potentially, in lieu of making that payment, contributing towards one of the projects that's going on in town with, with our services or that, that would have potentially gone on in town, but it just didn't come to fruition evidently.
So Paul, did you, do you want, do you want to come up and have a seat and?
Sure.
Kind of, I guess, fill us in on where you are with this.
Interesting. I think there's two facets to it, really. One is the, the calculation. Because basically, if you go, if you use inclusionary bylaw as a basis, it's not right, clearly. Because the inclusionary bylaw is only talking about new properties. It's not talking about a special permit property or anything like that. And so if you use just the inclusionary bylaw, use that as your basis for the calculation, that's where you get the eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollar. So that's one dimension. It should have been eighty-five thousand dollars to start with. And if, the other thing that goes kind of like hand in hand with it is the, the, that was supposed to be paid before the third house was actually sold. Now, that could have gone right up to the point before they signed the, the name on, on the dotted line. But they would know what the cost was. So the bylaw could have, the, the affordable housing component could have been calculated correctly if you wanted to. If you, if you didn't want to keep it low, if you just wanted to do it the way the inclusionary bylaw says, you wait until October, you go bang, 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 you have three new properties, that's it. And that's how you calculate it. That's the way it's supposed to work. It didn't. Why didn't it? I don't know. If we are so bound to the eighty, or the sixty-four, because that's all I heard. That's all I heard before. And I don't know where it came from. It certainly wasn't contrived from anything that's in the inclusionary bylaw, other than the fact that it has some smatterings of it.
Yeah, but you, you. I just want to, now, how, when did you know that it would be eighty-five thousand? Because when the, when the property was developed, houses were anticipated to sell five hundred, six hundred, not seven hundred.
Yeah, I didn't. I had, I had no idea.
I don't know. This is the problem. I was not able to find out who drafted this calculation.
That's, that's going to be a mystery.
Yeah, that's, that is a mystery because it varies.
Understood. And I think we were going through some trials and tribulations at that point in time. So.
Can I say?
It is where we are. So you're recused, correct?
Well, I used to be recused, but this is now a different component. This is a completely different issue.
Okay, then I need to clarify. Then I need to clarify because I, when you went out, I thought you were stepping up because of that. And I said to everybody, you're recused, so.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just want to say that I, I think this is one of those things where it's, it's an evolution of the affordable housing component when it's done in lieu and it's in a decision for a subdivision. This has been something that's been evolving ever since the first time we did it. And one of the important things is to get some standardized language. And I think I want to point to, oh, what is it? Vineyard Lane? What was that whole development for? Cyril Street?
Cyril? Turning Leaf.
Turning Leaf, Turning Leaf. That decision has good standard Pat language in it moving forward because one of the concerns we naturally would have would be that, any developer, you, it's small for you, but a ten lot, twenty lot subdivision, when you take these averages, we use the, we use the lots. And naturally, if I was a developer, what I would do intentionally is sell a lot to a straw.
Right.
To drop it down. Not saying that's, absolutely do not believe that that is what happened here. Do not, just for clarification. But we put a floor on any undeveloped lot.
So Harry, so what you're talking about, though, is what we need to do moving forward?
Yes.
No, on contrary.
I want to come back to the, what the issues in front of us is.
Yeah.
Oh, well, this, this is. This issue is really easy. He pays the sixty-four and it's done. I mean, it's clear cut in my mind.
Well, that's just you.
I'm sorry.
We haven't heard from anybody.
I just, this might be a stupid question.
No, Joanne.
But for the fourth house, why is that not taken into consideration at all?
Because the inclusionary bylaw specifically just deals with new houses. It says, according to here, let's see, AMSP times the number of new units times four percent.
Okay, so the three is the new houses.
Exactly.
Not the four, which was sold for two hundred and fifty, okay?
The decision is the decision.
So, did you have some questions? I, I'd like to.
No, that, that was kind of.
Okay, go ahead.
If you, if you look at your decision here, it says, the last sentence there, the last line, special permit with a dwelling unit constructed thereon. So when I read that, there's no question in my mind that it's your, your new addition is all part of your special permit. So the value of that whole parcel with the house on it, the new house on it, should have been added. It should have been included, not just the two forty and that's it.
That's how they're getting the sixty-four.
That's why I'm disagreeing with it. I don't agree with it.
So you're thinking the, the renovation cost should have been added into that? Is that what they're?
Because it says on the decision, the last part, special permit, which is what the two forty was, correct?
But he didn't pay for the renovations.
I know he did. It didn't matter. It doesn't matter. And I have.
Oh, it does matter.
It doesn't. Because I had that to him, maybe. Hold on a second. I'm, I'm glad you're laughing at it. I checked with town council. I've given John the memos, the copies of the memos. And he, when Turning Leaf was proposing to just consider the lots and not a house on it. We went to John. I've been back and forth. And I gave John all of that background, of the copy of the emails and I searched and searched for it. But anyway, he clearly said, if in fact a developer wants to sell a lot, you have to wait until he builds the house on it or figure out your average for the remaining areas, you know, that he does put a house on and then average it out. That's how John Eichman, as simple as I can explain, Edgar, he has lots more words. He didn't think it was funny. He thought that they were trying to get away with it and that's how he said it.
Well, so, so do you have that from John?
I gave that to you, John. You have it all.
Do you have a memo from John about that?
I sent it to you.
Yeah, but you didn't tell me who, who wrote it.
His name and, and address is right on it.
So, so that's John's.
John Eichman.
I, I'm not, I'm not clear on it. I'll look at the.
Okay.
Again, moving forward, and I, I would hope that, I hope we'll have a discussion on this at some time, moving forward.
Yeah, but.
We definitely will. But, but, but to Tilly's point, that John has rendered a legal opinion about this, I think is kind of important. And I.
Yeah, but now, did John?
About this or?
You know, I don't.
That's what Tilly's saying.
Now, did John Eichman do that calculation that you sent me?
No. You know who said, who I sent you because I figured it out to be in the eighty-fives. And then I redid it, redid it. And then I got another number, which was close to eighty-one, I think.
Now, does John Eichman have the condition?
No, I kept asking you.
Well, if he had this.
You and I were difference of opinions. Send it back to him.
This is the prob, this is the.
That's okay. So, so if, if, so are you, are you recalling the memo, the memo that Tilly's talking about?
No, but if, if that's there, I'm sure it's there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but the problem, the problem is, you know, when I calculated using the zoning ordinance, I, I came up with eighty-five. But didn't have any clue whatsoever. Didn't have num, page five of the decision. Once I got page five and I read it.
Understood.
You know, that's what it is.
But what Tilly's, if I'm understanding Tilly correctly, and I want to say, I am, I apologize for laughing. That was not okay.
Thank you.
The, the calculation, you know, for Palmer Lane subdivision and special permit, you know, if that, if John is saying that the number should be that dwelling unit, even though they didn't pay for the improvements, that the owner who bought it for two forty, it's his money that paid for the improvements. You know, if John Eichman has rendered a legal opinion that says that's what this means, I'd like to know about that.
Yeah. Well, I, I do too, but he hasn't seen this.
Well, that's what.
If you look through your emails, I'm sure you're going to find it.
So I don't know.
Because I sent it to you.
So let's, John, if you, so maybe look for that. Let's, let's kind of put that up here because it's an important piece of information.
But my concern too is I had sent him, I, I talked to another person that was involved with composing this bylaw for the fractional payment amount and doing the formula that was on your committee for the affordable task group at that time. And so I emailed him and I said to him, we've got a difference of opinions. Can you straighten it out? And that's the formula that I sent you. Came from the original writer of the formula.
However, based on the zoning ordinance. Yeah, based on the zoning ordinance, not based on condition number five that you signed and everybody else signed.
I sent that to him.
You didn't sign.
I never would.
That one you were.
I didn't even get to read it.
You were recused.
Yeah, I didn't get to read it. I kept myself for that now.
I agree. This is, it is different than the, than the way the bylaw reads.
I don't see it different because they added it with a dwelling unit on it. That's, that's why.
So, so, so I'd like to ask a few questions. So I'm correct when I say that you just sold this for two forty and that the value of that property, you didn't reap any of those rewards at all, correct? I mean, that just, you sold the property for two forty, but the value of the house was based on the owner doing all the work to it after two forty.
Oh, correct. He did all the work.
Did all the work, paid for all that.
Yeah, exactly.
And the problem is with this, we don't have, there's no recording of a higher fee. It, 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 there's no, no refi. You have a selling price of two forty that took place and that's it. There's no additional sales.
Understood. Understood.
And actually, I was chastised a little bit by the historic commission because I refused an offer. Somebody tried lowball on us in throwing out an offer of like two-ten. And I said, no, that's not, that's not acceptable. We eventually procured the buyer that paid the two forty. So I think it's, it's a little bit different also than the, the situation that Tilly's talking about with Turning Leaf. Because we didn't sell a lot. You know, this would be, I, I think that would be comparative to if we said, okay, we're going to sell lots one and two. And we only need to pay two fifty on.
I'd like to finish, let me finish my questions I have. Is, is historic happy with what is there today?
I don't know the answer to that question.
No, I have talked to several and they are not.
I don't know. I honestly, I haven't even seen the inside of the building.
So, okay, so Tilly's saying they're not. You're saying they don't. That's all I needed here. That's all I needed to hear.
Can I introduce, introduce one thing?
Let me finish, let me finish my questions because we keep going off in ten directions.
Well, this is, this is something that deals with that. If you look at the inclusionary components for part of the Palmer Lane, it says in, in paragraph C, the calculation, the AMSP, average market sales price, shall utilize the average sale price of the first two units of Palmer Lane definitive subdivision and, and, and the special permit with a dwelling, dwelling unit constructed thereon. But it, oh, yeah, you're right.
So I'm going to, I'll time out. I want to go back and answer, and I just want to finish my questions, please. Why, why did you sell it and not rehab it for the profit?
Quite frankly, I thought, I, I don't want to be insensitive. But I, I, I walked through that building. I love historic buildings. I, I, I salvage. If, if a, a building is not what I would consider rehabable, I salvage as much as I can. And I utilize it in other properties, quite often my own properties. I honestly didn't think that I could salvage that property.
And make it profitable?
It was, there was powder post beetles. There was structural damage. There were two by four, two by four floor joists in some areas. I just couldn't in good conscience try to renovate that and.
And make it work financially.
And sell it to somebody and sleep at night.
Understood. Okay, so, so I, so I get that. Why did you not, why did you not make the payment before the third lot?
Well, I think what we were looking at is the possibility of working with the, the commission on whether it was one of the projects that they potentially had in the pipeline or.
It was after October that, that we did that. It was, it was towards the end of the year.
But I, I know that there was, there was always conversation about possibly doing something in town, whether it was, you know, we had actually looked at another lot in town that we had thought about buying and, and moving the money to that lot. In addition to that, I, I know we had some, there was a little bit of unclarity as to what that number was. I know there were meetings that you folks didn't have a quorum, that I had a, a conflict that like, as John said, I think we tried to get together and.
So you're, so you were, the reason you didn't pay it before the sale of the third house was because you're thinking that this discussion is happening and you're trying to do that? Is, is that kind of what I'm hearing?
I think that was some of the moving parts. I think there were, you know, honestly, you know, in, in the back of my mind, I think we.
And I'm sure of good faith. I'm not.
Yeah, I think in the back of my mind, my partner and I, you folks have met Steve. Knew that the timing of the bond reduction was kind of, we were trying to get that in, right around the same time. And we thought that we'd pay the, the affordable housing fee out of the bond reduction. I think that's pretty much the, the three-ish moving parts that we're roaming around in there.
It does, it, okay. It does seem like if you're supposed to pay it before the third lot, that. Was there any dialogue with you about that?
I didn't know about it at that point, at that point in time. I didn't have a copy of the document that was, that was Palmer Lane's.
But I mean, there was no, was there, was there any conversation reaching out to you saying, you know, we have this payment we're supposed to make to you guys and by the third house?
No, I, I don't, I know I didn't have that conversation with Paul. I just knew that, you know, through conversations with Steve and, you know, the possibility of us purchasing a lot in Georgetown.
Doesn't that come from our side or the building, before the building, it's like it gives the occupancy? Isn't that the trigger or was it not?
Is that the trigger?
In most decisions, it's written that way. I don't know this decision intimately.
But this was always bandied about, you know, that Steve is partner, you know, from day one, when I came in here, they were talking about doing an affordable housing unit and trying to work. They had a lot. You guys had a lot located, but the deal fell through over a period of months. And then eventually, when this was coming to a head, they're finishing the subdivision and, you know, they want to make this payment. Steve always mentioned a figure of sixty thousand dollars, you know, as being that roundabout figure that was due for the affordable housing calculation. And then, you know, finally, when it, it came to fruition, hey, we have to come to a final agreement here and get either the money or the housing unit. And that started in October of last fall. So, you know, here we are, trying to get everybody again.
That's how we lost the two houses over in, over at, what's that? No, not Turning Leaf. We didn't lose those. We got those. We lost two over at, oh, what was it? Sage, Sage Road.
So.
Trying to do the right thing, everybody trying to figure out another alternative way. And unfortunately, that's where it falls. All the best intentions, but it falls through the cracks. And the bottom line is, the decision has to say occupancy permit will not be granted until.
Excuse me. There's no such thing as an occupancy permit. I found that out today.
Okay, well, whatever that is.
It's a release of lot. That's it. He doesn't have any other form.
I would, I would recommend in the future so that. If I could just say, I, I would, I would just recommend in the future, and we've talked about this before. The, the affordable housing fee is on a per-house basis, a per-lot basis. You, you can specify it so that when they're getting a sign off, everybody knows that they have to pay a certain amount for this affordable housing cost. That way it doesn't get lost and it doesn't get delayed, you know? And, you know, the town gets the money to be able to utilize it to create affordable. to be able to utilize it to create affordable housing or do, you know, do the good that's be, that's supposed to be produced.
I I think moving forward is gonna be easier than than, I I mean, I think the templates are there and and I I I don't, I don't think we really could have created this situation even if we had tried.
No, it was, it was too messed up, it is too messed up, yeah.
It's just one of those things that seems to have happened, so it's, it's on the one hand, you have the the zoning and the calculation of eighty-five thousand and then you have the, the, the document, the conditions, order of conditions on the other hand, which says the calculation is sixty-five thousand, so you have like, you have like the, the black and white.
It's eighty-five, uh, if it was sixty-five, I wouldn't even question it, you know, math.
Oh, right.
It isn't that much, but it's twenty, uh, twenty-one thousand more.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
Tilly, this evening, in front of everybody, Paul just read it and recognized it for the first time. It appeared to me that whoever wrote this, wrote this and you know it's different than what the zoning ordinance provided.
The big thing here is you guys are not even finding, following your own rules. Uh, because the inclusionary bylaw is very specific on how to calculate the MSP, and it specifically says you're gonna use new homes.
Well, I I I I would say we thought we were following it, Paul, I don't think this, this, this page, this page five has taken everybody, this page five has taken everybody by surprise.
That's, that's why. We wanna work with you guys.
This page five document that has been found has taken everyone by surprise.
But we didn't have anything at all before the page five was found. If you go into the inclusionary bylaw and just calc- calculated raw as as we did, then you come up with eighty-five.
I understand that, and that's what we thought we were doing. And then this section five or whatever section it is got drafted, uh, was put in and we're kind of going, where did it come from, how did we get there to that, we don't know.
And then that's what I'm trying to get to, uh, what we really like to do is when these kind of things come up, internally for this, we did this ad nauseam. Uh, we worked with you guys and and things went back and forth and there was a lot of snowballs and went both ways. Uh, but we came out of there with some good formulas that would work. And then the first thing that happens next is we don't use them.
Well, it's not that, no, we did use them, Paul, they were written, and that's why you came up with that, that's the ordinance that we have, and then somewhere before John, and you recall the problems we were having at that time with the planning board, somewhere this document got re, got changed.
Yeah, that I can't.
This was written by a different planner.
But that, but that's, but that's the point I'm trying to make, Paul, you keep saying us.
Yeah, well, it's, it's all of us, I'm saying we should work together more.
That's a good suggestion.
Well, that's, that's what we're trying to do now.
We're trying to do that.
But we're doing it after the fact, and it'd be a lot easier for all of us if it had been down up front.
Moving forward, how do we?
I think what, what we're all trying to say is they were going to.
I agree.
Make sure that the law, the code is rewritten so it includes everything that everybody wants and it's together, it's organized, it's official. So you have it, you go by and use it, this is a complete mess-up, you just need to fix it and go forward.
Right.
Totally agree.
I I have a couple of questions if I may. Um, the, do we know what the assessed valuation of the uh Blatchford House was? What, what were they paying taxes on? I'd actually have it if you really wanted. I'd like to get a, an idea, the two forty still bothers me, it just bothers me. I would have bought it.
It was on the market, anybody could have bought it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering, Paul, what's, do you know how much the?
I'll tell you those old houses, man.
Oh, I know, I've owned old houses.
I have one.
We have one.
Especially when the termites get up to the world.
It, it had some great features in it, it had some nice white pine floors that I know he, he saved.
Two-tenny streets.
The fireplace in the family room, the, the two-sided fireplace was spectacular. So it would, honestly, from my standpoint, like I said, if I thought I could, uh, could have renovated that and done okay with it, we, we may have gone that route, but.
Well, even from the outside as you drive by, no one would know that's a historical house unless you're involved with the affordable provision.
Unfortunately, once it leaves.
That's not what I call historical, you know?
Demo delay by law, probably could use a little bit of tweaking.
They, you know, there's not even a plaque on it to say, you know, such and such lived there or there's, how old it is. There's nothing but green siding.
So, um.
Anyway, if I.
Continue with that?
Oh, you go.
Yeah, um.
Well, we need to kind of come up with a decision of how we wanna handle this.
I think this gentleman needs to write a check. Forgive me, but.
So what, ob- obviously, this has to do with the entire parcel. So it, you can't really cut out the, the piece, I mean, the, I think the dwelling was three hundred some odd thousand, according to this. The only dwelling, right, the assessed value of that dwelling. So it was about four hundred thousand for the whole thing then? Eight hundred some odd thousand for the whole thing. So it was four hundred thousand for the land?
So the total assessment was how much?
No, total assessment is three fifty. What's the bottom rate, eight hundred thousand?
How many acres is it showing?
Eight hundred thousand is, it includes, it looks like a couple of units were pretty on there, or they were actually put on there. Well, I, the, the, the point is that the existing dwelling was three something, I think. Yeah, yeah, it's three fifty-three. How much, did the um affordable housing trust think it was worth? What, the house? Yeah, cause you've got money to buy houses, right? You've got, you, how much do you have, do you have enough to buy it?
About half a million.
We could have bought that, yeah.
Yeah, you could have bought that and it's not beating you.
But I'm not sure we want a historical house. Perhaps not, but if it was assessed for three forty-seven or whatever that was, you could have flipped it.
Yeah.
The person probably, he bought it for two forty, is at least two hundred in rehab costs involved with.
If it's two by four floor joists, it's more than that.
If not three, yeah, all day. Probably three, so.
It's not affordable anymore.
The trouble, I mean, the trouble is when those termites, everything else gets into all that wood.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's, there's a house down the street from where I live and it's a seventeen thirty house, it's, it's five thousand square feet. And uh it had value until they did the house inspection and the termites got all the way up to the roof and into all the joists and everything, so.
But that's that house.
So you said, right now with the new addition, it's eight hundred and something?
That's what it says, I don't, I'm not sure exactly how the assessor calculated that, he's got six hundred fifty thousand, five hundred, or six thirty, five hundred, uh, one sixty-five and eleven thousand, and it doesn't say what each of these elements are.
So what's the most?
That would have been the assessment while this project was moving forward.
Could have been, but it certainly isn't, yeah, it would probably.
How many, how many acres is it showing, is it taking the entire, pre, prior to subdivision?
It has to be. Land acre, one point three acres.
One point three, so it is looking at the individual lot.
The individual.
But that's an interesting thing to look at when we have our discussion, appraised, uh, excuse me, assessed value, assessed value, it might be an element.
Recorded, the recorded sale of the entire property, including the original house, just the land and the house, that, that sale, that recorded sale was four hundred and eighty thousand something to that effect.
Right, four hundred eighty-three thousand.
Yeah, so that was, and then, once the approval was done, right? That house, because it was technically an A and R, it was a special permit A and R, they were able to sell that individually because it had frontage, it already existed, they sold that for two forty, so they're four eighty-three, two forty, that's how much they were into the land for, and then development costs thereafter.
I don't think we did an A and R on that though.
So, so we have, so we have before us, we have, you know, we have, um, we have the, the document, the, the conditions and, you know, says sixty-five thousand.
To my mind, I, I just don't see any difference.
The intent, which was eighty-five thousand.
I just, I just don't see any difference in what is written.
A derivative thereof, if the market tanked and those houses ended up selling for four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, then.
None of my.
It was just by happenstance that the market jumped, that, you know, when they did sell those two new houses, they sold for an average of seven hundred. If it was two years previous.
So we're gonna, we're gonna need to, we need to make a decision.
It's a fluid number.
How, you know, what, we, we have a document, we have sort of a legal document that says sixty-five. And then we have the intent of what we thought we were doing, which would have said more.
But I, I still think that this, this is no different.
And then, then to Tilly's point on that.
No different than the bylaw.
Apparently John Eichman has, I hate to postpone this, but I sure would, if, if in fact John Eichman has rent, has read that and has rendered an opinion.
Swearing a Bible, it's, it's there.
He read that, he read that decision, I mean, that, that page, I don't know that.
No, because I asked you to send it to him, but.
I, I mean, what we should be watching out for, the affordable housing trust could possibly sue the planning board for not collecting, collecting the correct amount. You know, so why don't we, why don't we bring everything to John Eichman and have him spend about two or three thousand dollars of town funds to figure out the decision for us?
May I make a suggestion here?
Would they be ready for a compromise?
May I make a suggestion? So we're, we're here in two figures, well, not even meet in the middle because from my opinion, the, the decision stands and it will stand after John sees it, but just a suggestion, um, there's two possibilities here, you're gonna be paying sixty-four thousand approximately or you're gonna be paying eighty-five thousand.
Or, or a compromise.
Or, or a compromise, um, if you would have paid the sixty-four eight tonight, um, then leave it open that we could talk about other things. Paul has his, his uh contribution at that point and we could look into other things, but if there's a compromise.
But what do you mean other things, getting a legal opinion?
Getting the legal opinion, letting John Eichman see the decision, page five, which we, we, we're not sure he saw?
No, I don't think, not what I sent him, what I sent him was when Turning Leaf was going on. And we had many discussions with the attorney.
Right, and and that's one of the reasons we came up with a floor of five hundred and fifty for a lot sale.
And the board wanted to go to Eichman, it wasn't just me, it was the board, wanted to straighten this out.
But that was a different situation though.
It was a whole.
It's still the same.
If it wasn't black and white, okay, I would have made sure Eichman got his hands on it, but, you know, it's black and white as I see it, it's, it's just an unusual, unanticipated consequence of whoever drafted this.
It's not black and white, it's yellow.
I, I do, I, 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 you know, I, I do wish there had been more of an effort to, to, when, when the money was due based on the third, I wish there had been more of an effort to, to finalize it versus, um, but that's done.
If that would have happened, this, we, we'd have taken the sixty-four thousand, wouldn't even looked at the formula or anything else, we just assumed it would be correct.
I, I suspect that probably is true, but.
The decision needed to have in bold print prior to the release of the third lot.
Yeah, and and it will be the next time around, we'll go back and we will make sure that, we can get on Turning Leaf, actually.
Actually, if I may. If I may, the value of the property where the special permit is, with his addition, it's probably up to the eight hundred thousand. When I calculated and I think Paul too, no average came up to that, we didn't use that number at all. The highest number I think was your four thousand for seven something, so we never really used what we could have used. We could have, in my opinion, and based on the bylaw, we could have used the whole value.
The only figure you could do is today's assessed value, okay? However, he did not profit from that.
It doesn't mean that, it, it, that is every rule of it.
But it would be today's, it would be today's assessed value, whatever Tom has that assessed at right now.
Here's what I, here's what, so if, if, if the affordable housing trust is willing to, um, you know, shake hands and and take the sixty-five now, we can do that, obviously, and be done with it. And uh, the only, the only other option I see is to, um, to, to, uh, give Tony a little time to think about, on a compromise, not force you to think about it right now, that's not fair. And, and we have another meeting, not for discussion, not for, not for going through this thing again, you know, it's sixty-five. If you come back and say no, um, but at least you have time to think about it and and make a gesture to, what was the intent? Which I think everybody sort of agrees what the intent was supposed to be.
If I may make one comment, what you said is that, number one, it's the planning board's decision and number two, the affordable housing task force is an advisor's force.
Understood.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to be sure that it is our decision.
Well, no, I, I, so we can make that decision if everybody wants to make that decision now.
I think you already did make the decision, you decided.
Well, I, I, I.
Maybe I'm legally incorrect here, but.
Well, I, I think.
I think to a degree we did.
To face, there's two more projects coming up and to face this again.
Well, we're, we'll fix it going forward.
That's what we said last time, that's, if sixty-five thousand is fine, if, if we make damn sure that it doesn't happen again. We should work together and this won't happen, we know how to work numbers, we have calculators.
But, but, and it didn't happen with Turning Leaf, as you said.
But it did in the end, we beat ourselves to death on that with the lot and, you know, how you did the AMSP. All these things were defined then and put in, in basically in concrete. Like an AMSP is an average of new houses, uh, with a lot, or a lot with an average of, of the houses previous to that. So it, there's actually ways of figuring out everything, it's, it's pretty, pretty robust.
It, it's called growing pains too, evolution.
But, but that, but we went through and we shouldn't have to experience them again, that's what I'm getting to.
You're right, we shouldn't, we shouldn't make the same mistake twice, I totally agree with that.
Exactly. Yeah, and that's all, that's what I'd be looking for, keep us involved in some of this stuff so we, we don't get behind and and we don't make mistakes.
You know, the, the absolute way of not making mistakes, you know, is to have continuity of, of personnel. When, when you, you have a changing of the guard, um, there's no, um, list left by that person of all the outstanding issues. Unless you spend a significant amount of time with that outgoing person to go over all the Ts and crossing. You end up in that office, you might as well have a blindfold on with the lights off.
I, I think, I think it's, I, I think that's a big part of it, I, I think that's a big part of it in this case.
This would, yeah, I, in my opinion, this would have been caught if we followed our subdivision regs that says the planning board votes for occupancy. And it's very black and white, and if we had done that, we would have, because we sit here, I know if I was sitting there, I would have told you, you know?
So when we get to the, so when we get to the next one, we will, um.
Live and learn, there's actually a couple coming our way this year.
But I, I will, I will, I will say, I will say this, that, that, that even, even if this same thing could happen again, even with us doing the best effort possible, working directly with you, this same thing could happen again if there is a change in the main player, um, and a new person comes in and documents change, the same thing could happen.
I, I think we can minimize that by careful, careful attention to the decision, the way the decisions are written. To, to make these things really stand out in, as a building inspector, flipping through, doing due diligence, flipping through a sixteen-page decision, boof, before the release of the third lot, oh, wait a minute, isn't this the third lot release? Things like that, little things, help, help them.
I agree.
Help.
I agree.
Could I ask the board a question, and this might help you moving forward? Is there any reason that you don't collect that fee upon occupancy of each dwelling?
That should be the amendment.
How do you do that, if it's average?
That, it should be.
You don't worry about the average, the average is gonna work itself out, if you sell a house for six hundred thousand dollars, you pay on six hundred thousand dollars. If you sell a house for six fifty, you pay on six fifty, the average works out.
You're absolutely right.
Definitely.
It just, I don't think they wanna make a check like the subdivision was twenty-some units, they don't wanna be cranking out twenty-some checks.
I wanna say it doesn't matter, because I'll tell you what, this makes, this makes you guys even safer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it does.
Because what, what you could do is you could actually tie it into the closing, so the developer would have a chance, so if I was to do a twenty lot subdivision, I'd have a chance to either pay you before I get my occupancy or send a statement to the closing attorney saying that the occupancy permit is intact, give them a copy of it of some sort and, um, allow the, the payment to come directly out of closing, I think you could work that out if you really wanted to. However, let me tell you something, no builder or developer is gonna say, oh, I can't stroke your check for twenty thousand dollars, uh, and, you know, i- if, if it's contingent upon me getting my occupancy, I'm cutting the check for twenty thousand dollars. Because I know I'm getting it back tomorrow when I close my house. Now, again, if, if you chose to work with the developer a little bit, um, you might get the check from, out of closing, you know? Do it as municipal lien certificate, so that, it shows up on the municipal lien certificate and that twenty thousand dollars goes to, there's, there's other ways around it that I think is safer than the way it's even written in the bylaw.
The surety is what we have in there, in the bylaw, to protect us. The surety that we could've done, and like your REM account, we could've put surety right in there for the, for the required payment. So, that's already in the bylaw.
So, what, so what, so what do we, so what, so what do we need to do to ensure that we have a plan moving forward? To make sure that we get this resolved? Are we going to wait till the next affordable housing project comes before us, or are we gonna be proactive with it?
I think we should be proactive.
Definitely proactive.
So, um, is that something for our agenda, to put on the agenda, John, and start to?
One way we could, eh, eh, one way you could do it, because, um, you really do have to, in this particular type of calculation, you do have to get to the point of the selling price to figure out the maximum amount due, right? So, you could tie, you could tie it into, um, the as-built plan, you know, upon final acceptance of the subdivision in the right of way. Tie it into.
So, what, so.
Collecting the whole thing at that one.
Fold and run.
So, could we, so could we?
Fold and run, it's an LLC, bye-bye.
So, could we put, so could we put this?
But no, that would be, that would be part of the surety.
So, could we put this as part?
That would be part of the surety.
So, could we put this as part of our agenda item that we're gonna start picking away?
Yeah.
At this process, and, and what I'd like to make note is, is specifically to this idea of getting paid per lot as something for us to discuss, 'cause that.
Discussion.
Kind of a, that was kind of like a V-eight, I could've had a V-eight.
Yeah.
It makes, it makes it so much harder for it to slip through the cracks.
I, 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 it's like, and, and if that works for you.
Yeah, it, it would be fine. I think, you know, at least with turny leaf, uh, that would've been, they would've, I don't think they'd have been happy with that.
But, whether they're happy or not on twenty-seven checks, as far as.
That's, that's what you're talking about. You're, you're just talking about a little bit of a, of a bookkeeping nightmare.
But they built at least one.
That's just administrative. That's nothing. It's nothing.
And if it, and if it makes it happen, and it makes it simple for everyone.
They built two, and then they bought it. So, did they make any in lieu payments?
Then they bought it.
There's, you should have, they, yeah.
Okay, so can we?
Go back to the.
Interesting, isn't it?
Could we then wrap?
Go back to your money.
Nonetheless, yes.
Now.
Could we wrap this one up then with the, with the sixty-five and, and, um, know that, uh, we're gonna put this on the agenda and, um, we're gonna start, um, giving it more attention than, and hopefully it won't happen again.
Yeah, it's, it's in the document, I mean, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's misleading, 'cause if you read one section of it, it says specifically, you gotta use the, the special unit, uh, and then if you go to the next page, it, it doesn't talk about that at all. That's, it's there.
And that's, 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 um.
Yeah, I understand.
But you're ignoring the rest of it with the dwelling unit construction on it.
But we're gonna, let's, so let's.
Yeah, it, it's really.
I would, I would recommend to do, to, to go along with what you're saying, but right now, I think we shouldn't cash this payment, this check that he's got, until such time as John Eichman goes over this and advises us. Because we're talking twenty thousand dollars, and I feel if it was a couple thousand, I wouldn't bother, but I think this is, this is critical. And, um, the, the developer, uh, the applicant, uh, whoever messed up, did not make a payment after the second house. So, they violated this contract, in my opinion.
I, I don't know, Tilly.
It was never, there was never a payment after the second house.
No, it was before the first, before the sale of the third house.
It was upon the third.
Before the sale of the, well, oh, you, well, okay, say it that way.
But nonetheless, we did in good faith.
I'm sure you did.
Get the discussion rolling and try to get this calculation done, and.
I'm sure you did.
So, so to Tilly's.
But I'm not satisfied with taking just that, that amount without another one coming, another check.
So, to Tilly's, uh, how, how do the board members feel on, on, um?
Well, I, I don't read section C the way Tilly reads it. I don't read that with the dwelling unit constructed thereon. I think all that's really saying is.
There is a dwelling.
That there's a building on it, yeah.
Yeah.
That's where.
Uh, that has been constructed.
Take it literally.
It's not that it's to be, it doesn't say to be constructed thereon, it says constructed thereon.
Which was trying to get at what.
Quite frankly, I'd like to see the board, you know, I, I'd, I'd like to bring this to fruition. We've been trying to mess with this since October, and, and I know you guys wanna put it to rest, and so do I, and I, I mean, that. I, I've gotta think a check for sixty-five grand does something for you guys. Um, I, I'd prefer to see the board vote on it, we get it put to rest. I know there's a bond release or a, a reduction on the table. Our hope was that we took the money out of there, but if I need to show up tomorrow and write a check for the sixty-four, sixty-five thousand dollars, I'm happy to do that. I'd just like to bring this whole thing to fruition.
So, you didn't have a, you don't have a registered check for the sixty-four thousand?
Excuse me? The, no, because I didn't think that, that.
Okay, so there's time there. You didn't do the check.
But he was gonna bring a check tomorrow, though.
Yeah, I, I.
Sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars.
So, do we, John, do we need a motion for the board to vote on this? To, to say yes, sixty-five thousand?
If, I didn't put one in here, but if the board wants to.
Do we need to?
Um, it, don't need to. It, it's the amount due in accordance with the decision, the language of the decision.
Done deal, you bring the check in tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
I can bring the check.
And I, and I guess that's how I feel, and, and it's sort of an, it's sort of an informal, uh, vote of the board, but, Joanne.
I agree.
Harry.
I, I agree.
Bob, I agree. Tilly?
I don't.
Yeah.
Poor Tilly.
It's four to one. Do you wanna put it in the form of a motion to make it official?
Um. I don't agree.
Eh.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to have the developer, uh, deliver a check to the town for the affordable housing in lieu payment, uh, in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars?
I believe it's sixty-four, H, eighty-four.
Sixty-four, eight eighty-four.
Eight eighty-four.
Bye, sir.
Sixty-four, eight eighty. So, motion has been made and it's been seconded for the, uh, Paul, uh, developer, um, to provide a check in the amount of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars to the Affordable Housing Trust, um, as per conditions of approval. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
One no.
One no.
Should, uh.
We'll do that, and now we have the surety issue.
The, yes, the, uh, before we move on to that, though, uh, should the check be made out to the town of Georgetown, to the Georgetown?
How are you?
Not sure.
Georgetown Affordable Housing Trust.
Affordable Housing, yeah.
Is that how that goes?
Yeah.
It's either that or you can give it to the town accountant, she's gonna transfer it over.
No, it goes into, everything we have has to go into the, uh.
The general fund?
General fund. You want a check for it to the.
Can't go wrong with town of Georgetown.
Georgetown Affordable Housing Trust.
Paul, did you talk to your other members about this?
Oh, yeah.
And how do they feel?
They haven't read any of it, so.
Oh, gee.
That's good.
Lots of help for you, huh?
But, but it's, eh, we did go over it in a sense that, that it's, it's in the document. If it wasn't in a document and it was just speculation on some, the way somebody wanted to do the formula, or munge the formula around, that would be different. But, but it's in black and white, so what are you gonna do? That's, that's why I think it's the most important thing we come away with, is we work together. I mean, turny leaf was, was kind of a hassle. We got to a good place. Everybody was happy when we got done.
She, yeah, they were.
We, we will, we will do that. So, let, moving on to the next item as part of this, which is the reduction of this, of the surety, um, from the existing hundred and seven thousand, seven eighty-nine, oh-six to fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen ninety-five. And, John, my understanding, my line to that is John Varga's signed document.
Yes, yeah.
So, I don't see any reason why not to do.
John, is this the, uh, is this, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if this is the motion right here?
Yeah.
Um, so here it now, Ms. Jim, and if nobody has any questions, it's me.
Motion?
Uh, make a motion to reduce the presently established Palmer Lane subdivision cash surety of one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents to fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents. Cemented sum accurately represents the surety necessary to complete all the remaining work items associated with the subdivision pursuant to the planning board's subdivision regulations in accordance with the actual cost to complete the subdivision in a one-year as provided by the towns consultant engineer Dave Varga. Note said suret, sorry.
Skip the note.
Sorry.
Ed, do we have a second?
A second.
So, the motion has been made. We're gonna have to have like a little whip when they get longer than a certain.
John has to write smaller motions. Really, can we get the abridged version of these motions?
You wouldn't believe some of these motions that I've written over the years, and they really won.
I would.
You guys don't like them.
No, no, this is, uh.
Not the long, we're not the long version. So, the motion has been made and it's been seconded to reduce the presently established Palmer Lane subdivision surety of one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents to fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-five cents, uh, as read by, uh, Harry Lacatiglia. Any, uh, discussion?
Are you gonna read the note?
No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, takes care of that. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Who's the second on that one?
Do you want me to call you and then give the check directly to you, or should I give it to the town clerk, or to John?
Just make sure I get a copy of it.
Yeah, why don't you just give it to John? Uh, we have, we have an office up here, but, but it's not manned all the time.
All right, I'll walk it over to your assistant. I'll walk it over to your assistant.
Yes, my assistant, yes.
Was she on the, uh, is she on payroll now?
I'll, I'll make sure I have a copy.
Does she have a office now?
She's even got, she's got business cards. I don't even have business cards.
Okay, so we have one more, uh, agenda item.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have the proposed zoning ordinances, and, um, basically, uh, the first one is the, uh, building height, uh, that's notice of public hearing one. The, uh, second item that was in the packet, uh, notice of the public hearing for the stretch energy code, that's not before us really, that's been done, we did our job, the selectmen put that on the agenda. So, the only other, um, one for the notice of public hearing is the, uh, zoning amendment for the, uh, building area, uh, use, uh, leading property line, so it's building to, uh, for the marijuana district. And, John, I think the building height, the first one, uh, everybody, we've talked about that one for quite a while. Uh, I don't think we need to go over that one again unless board members need to. I think the other one, though, if you wanna give an overview of that one.
Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman, I, am I wrong, or we're gonna be, don't each one of these need to have a, an individual hearing?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, next, the next meeting, our next meeting.
Correct.
The next meeting is the actual hearing, per se.
And that's, that's why in the packet, the two of them have notice of public hearing, and the, the, uh, the stretch one did not have any notice written down of public hearing. So, there will be two public hearings.
Okay, the stretch we're not dealing with?
That's all done. It goes.
Oh, that's not us?
Selectmen.
That's selectmen.
So.
And that was achieved on, on Monday.
Oh, nice, they already did it?
They already did.
Done.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a warrant out of.
It's gonna be on warrant.
Yeah.
We're all set with that. So, we had to, so on the, on the last one?
Yeah, now, on the last one, um, again, this is advertised for our next meeting, and, um, what it pertains to is that right now, the marijuana, um, business overlay district and the bylaw that dictates all of the marijuana uses. Right now, the distance, uh, between the marijuana business uses and the abutting properties, if they're residentially zoned, or they're utilized for a number of uses specified as being prohibited. That measurement is from lot line to lot line, or zoning district, marijuana business overlay district, to the nearest, uh, property line or zoning line, all right? And the buffer is three hundred feet. And what has caused a problem is that within the overlay district, and you can see it up here, um, I'll reduce that. And the mauve color with the, um, green backwards Cs on it, so all this mauve area here is the overlay district and on both sides of the highway. And it does extend up, hold on one second, it continues up.
Oh, yeah.
Into these areas here. And within the marijuana business overlay district, um, much of it falls within that three hundred feet, um, with the residential buffer. So, what is proposed, and, and, and basically renders a lot of that district unusable for its intended purpose. So, this particular bylaw change would start the measurement from the marijuana building, or buildings thereon, to the nearest point, whether it's a residential house or a backyard. Or the other uses that are prohibited within three hundred feet, whether they're structural or a, a yard area that's being used for, um, children, or a place where children congregate. Um, you still get the three hundred foot buffer, but it's measured from the marijuana business. Um, I'll give you a specific, for instance, that's going on right now as we speak. Let me get a little bit closer in here. This particular lot right here, um, on Narina Way is proposed, and that received a, a host agreement, this lot right here. Received a host agreement from the town, it's been proceeding, uh, at the state level for permitting. Um, and inadvertently, I can't put it any other way, um, it has been discovered, um, that it's right beside the residential zone. And this is, um, Long Hill Road here. So, you have three dwelling units right here that are, um, you know, this is the marijuana business overlay zone right here, and that's the residential district. So, this lot right here is, um, cannot be used. That's just a specific example, and.
It's also right next to the, um, the, the apartments.
Yeah, the apartments.
Right across the street.
Yeah, which.
Are in use.
Very, yeah, a very unusual situation with that, because that's a, that's a legal non-conforming use in an industrial zone. And within the multitude of uses that are prohibited under section H of the marijuana business overlay district bylaw, um, none of those uses that would be prohibited are taking place, um, within that, um, apartment complex.
But it's a residential use.
It, it's a residential use, but, again, you gotta read the bylaw, and you can, you, and this has been determined, um, by the zoning administrator, who was the building inspector. In multiple occasions already.
You read it that way, huh?
Yeah, yeah. Because there's another one across the street, um, that received a, a host agreement already, and they'll be coming in soon. It's across the street from the, um, Longview Apartments, and, and it's exempt. Yeah, so, that's, that's what we're dealing with as far as a public hearing is concerned, and that's at our next meeting.
John, just to, just to go back on that, so if, as far as the, the apartments are concerned. They're not considered a residential use?
There, it's a residential, you, Harry, eh, I, I, I will make sure that John Eichman weighs in on this, which he already has.
Yeah.
But it's because it's in an industrial zone.
Absolutely.
It's a forty B.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Residential use is not allowed in the forty B, I mean, in the, in the res, in the industrial zone. It's not allowed. It was allowed through the special exception of the forty B.
Right, comprehensive permit.
Yeah.
My, my issue is that the way I read the marijuana, um, marijuana bylaw, um, the way it's described is the use of that is also.
For a residential.
For three hundred.
Yeah.
And, and, and definitely people can disagree in the way that words are interpreted.
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind pulling it out and going over it. That's not a problem. Um, because, you know, this, this has been something, ever since it was passed, that we had, we've had to deal with at the zoning level.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it's interesting. It's, it's an interesting concept.
How about the other, uh, IB areas, industrial areas?
Um, hold on one second. See, this is all in dust, um, marijuana business overlay slash IB zoning district that directly.
Where are the houses near there?
Um, in this particular area. Hold on, let me get closer. There's nothing behind these right now.
No, but you keep going, it's still IB.
Right.
Well, interestingly enough, I, uh, I did a little bit.
Now, there, uh, that, that lot.
Yeah.
I did a little bit of counting.
See, the house is very.
Oh, yeah, now, these are all.
But there's nothing up there right now.
No.
Not, um, what's, what's that street?
Kenny?
Off of Kenny, what's that first one, Ho, uh?
Hickory. Hickory.
There's houses on there.
Oh, yeah.
Can, can I just say something? Over the weekend, I was looking at this, and I pulled up my map and I did a quick count-up, and naturally, anywhere you're gonna have your industrial zone, your IB zone, and your new mari- marijuana district. You're, naturally, you're gonna be butting up to the district that's residential. That only makes sense. It's either residential or it's industrial marijuana. Um, so I did a count-up to see. So I did a count up to see what was within and what would be affected by the changes that this is proposing. You'd have affected, directly affected, 10 houses on Longview Way. 10 houses on Longview Way. Five on Spalding. All the apartments on Norino, but evidently that doesn't count. Three on Long Hill Road. Seven lots on Hickory Lane. Five lots on Jewett. And also, you have a housing authority complex on Jewett up in the end. Multiple lots there.
And when you say affected.
You're going from, you're going, you're going to be changing from, this is, if I'm reading it correctly, is changing a 300-foot setback from property line to property line now to 300 feet to the buildings on those lots.
Well, the marijuana, the marijuana building, but any areas that children would congregate.
Like their backyard?
The backyard. So that's technically how it reads.
Still the lot line.
It, it, yeah, yeah, it would be the lot line. But, you know, in this.
That's not what it's saying, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's saying building.
No marijuana.
Any other use listed above to the nearest point of the building of the proposed, direct measurement from the nearest building or area of use.
That's what I mean.
Right, building, that's house.
Backyard.
Building or area of use.
Right, right.
So.
It's only the marijuana building.
Backyard setback, 40 feet in most districts? Rear yard setback? Rear yard setback, whatever it is.
Yeah, but technically, you have to interpret it as any, any use where children would congregate, right? Within 300 feet of that use. And that's the backyard of property. So it would be the property line.
What about the pool of the Norino of the, of the apartments?
That, Andrea said, she lives there, she said there's no pool there. It's not a public pool either.
No, it's a private pool.
Harry, have, have you read the, have you read the second page of that? Of that, have you read the second page of the pamphlet H?
Yep.
Eligible locations?
Eligible locations, yep. 300 linear feet of a property. No marijuana use shall be located within 300 linear feet of a property line with the following district. Yeah, these are all, this is the ones we had before.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But now.
So I, I mean, I, the only thing in there that I see is similar facility in which minors commonly congregate in an organized, ongoing, formal basis. When I see the word facility, I don't see that as being a backyard.
Yeah, and, and this is, this is my primary concern. I mean, why do we, why do we have zoning at all? Why do we have these residential districts versus an industrial, commercial district or an IB district? We, we separate, we draw this imaginary line so that there's no nuisance. So that I'm, don't look out my side window and 20 feet away, there isn't a factory there. You, you want to separate these things out. It, it's interesting. I, I, I don't know how I feel about this. I saw what we did when we took with our rubber stamp. And we said, okay, we'll make the marijuana business district the IB district. And I saw that. I intentionally understood that. But at the same time, I also knew that there was a 300-foot property line to property line setback. And in my mind, I knew that limited the development of some of these parcels. And there's actually something in here that let's just reduce that by 25% if the applicant can show that there is a, that it would make citing the business impossible. It lets the planning board, as the special permit granting authority, reduce that distance by 25 feet, 25 percent.
So this is, this is.
This is something to consider. This is something that affects these people that live in these houses.
And I, and I.
Directly. And that's where.
I can't impact those people. I couldn't do it.
I'm, I'm having a little bit of, I'm a little, I don't know, I'm.
Yeah, but now for this particular lot right here, that you're talking about right there, right? So that's the edgy, that's the lot line there. So that distance to the property line of the residential district is 620 feet. So it goes way beyond 300. The only problem with this particular lot, and it does have a host agreement by the board of selectmen already, the only problem is right here, right? Now, they, that's where the marijuana district ends, right here, with the residential district. So no matter what, this lot, particular lot, is rendered useless for the proposed use, except that they can pull the building through, at least 300 feet away from the existing overlay district in the abutting residential lot line. So they, they, they would have to pull the building 300 feet away.
From this point.
Yeah.
Could you, could you, could you say the point there, John, start?
Yeah.
What's the problem about that? Why can't they?
Yeah, but see, the way it reads now, it's property line to property line.
Right, but what's the problem with the building being placed somewhere else within, to cover the existing bylaw?
Because they can't. They can't because it's, it's lot line to lot line.
I understand.
Wait, it's currently.
You're not understanding what I'm asking you. I know what you're doing, the, the project that you said that the selectmen just accepted, the money. What do you call that?
Post-agreement.
Post-agreement money. Why can't that building be moved on? Mirrors property.
To another lot.
On another area so that it would fit in the 300 requirement before districts.
Then you get to this issue here. This, this other property right here, this lot right here is for sale here. I, you know, once you start this measuring, it doesn't go away.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's terrible. It's terrible.
Because it's not.
Really strange.
It's not even, it's like all.
All right, now, I got rid of that, I got rid of it, I got rid of it. Now, all right, so you got to double click, excuse me. All right, so from this point right here.
Sticks to you, sticks to the lot.
So from that point to that point right there, this, because this big, deeper lot is for sale. That's only 211 feet away.
Yes, right, yeah.
So that, that's rented.
All right, but let's kind of narrow for, for excess and everything else. But why, where is this building going to be placed on that lot?
I, I think the point is, the point of the modification is to, is to drive that distance by the building.
Right.
The location of the building. So if the building is here, ain't a problem under the new rubric.
Well, we can't, can't put it up here.
So the building with the new.
It's 150 feet from the apartment, the apartment building.
That's a different issue, that's a different issue. Just, just talking about that particular lot.
I'm really sorry, but I'm having a lot of trouble distinguishing between that single-family residence.
Is it going to be a two-and-a-half-story building?
And the 400 apartments that are.
I totally understand. I think that's something we've got to get.
No, it still won't fit. It still won't fit, no matter, you can't use it.
Even if, even if somehow it's.
As it's worded now, you can't use the lot. That's the problem.
Because it's like residential use.
Yeah, it's not residential.
Who's, who's, who's using it?
There's 300 people living there, but it's not residential.
Well, that's because number one says any residential district as defined by chapter 165.
See, it's the word district.
It doesn't say residential use.
Residences, leave it at that.
Well, I think it should be in there because number one, the state requires 500 feet.
We, we, we intentionally lowered that. I remember us discussing that.
That's right, so we were compromising there with the 300.
500, and we said we can make it, we can make it more.
If, if it stayed at 300 property line to property line, it's not as if there's not going to be a number of opportunities for development. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Oh, well, this is, this is what I'd like to see. And, you know, I don't know who the proponents of this are. But when they come to the hearing, I would hope that they would be in a position to show us exactly which of these parcels in our zoning, in our zoning area, are made.
Unusable.
Unusable.
Yep.
Because of this. Show me that on the map. And you might have a shot to convince me.
So the assessor would have to give a, a notice list of all the houses. How are you going to do that? How are you going to notify?
For me, I don't see any problem having any sort of.
How are you going to notify the abutters that are, yeah, living the houses now?
No, but if you, if you draw a line 300 feet from the nearest part of that, this line, you'll, I mean, you'll see that any property that touches that is out of bounds.
Right, everything is out of bounds.
And that's the point.
Yeah, everything, everything is out of bounds. Because look at this, this is all the residential.
I misunderstood. I didn't know it was, everything was out of bounds.
Everything along here.
Could do one here.
That Norina owns. That Norina owns, right?
Could do one here because of here.
Right.
Why can't they reshape the lots?
Ah, no, you got it, kiddo.
Is that stupid?
That is the trick. I put a one-foot lot.
I tell you, I think it would be easier than past this.
I put a one-foot lot and all of a sudden, I'm awake.
I know. I mean, the problem, the problem is, more than anything, the town.
You too, that's too quick.
Put this in place. And it exists as it does. And another one of those law of unintended consequences. Because you have an overlay district that you really, it's kind of rendered useless.
Yeah, but you better.
In many, many of the lots.
So, so, so you said that, you said that they're all, you said that they're all rendered useless?
Yeah, now, technically, this one right here.
But so you said all of them will be rendered useless if we don't make this change? Am I understanding that correct?
Well, we could, we could spend some time and go around here.
Well, so I think.
This one's safe.
But I think the hyperbole, for me, is important to understand. I mean, if it means that there are six lots that are developable, that, that's, I'd like to know that information.
I mean, I think, you know, we could take, yeah, a printed map of this and, and a marker and just guess 300 feet. Okay, that one's no good. That one's no good. That one's no good.
You definitely can do that.
It's not, this is not a hard thing to do.
No, you definitely could do that.
And I would hope the proponent would be able to do that.
Hey, this one, this one here, for instance, is a, there's a host agreement and well underway and everything else. And technically, because that's the forest right there, that's, that's within 300 feet. Null and void.
Got the forest.
The other one on Norina could end up in a, who knows, court of law.
Which one is Norina? What number is that one?
1505.
This one here.
All right, the Long Hill one. This little, this little area.
All of these have been worked on in good faith. That's the problem.
This was changed to be residential because of this.
Because they built houses.
Getting to this property in the back. So this gentleman that owned all that wanted access off of Long Hill Road. And that was changed for him. He would be an important person to notify. Because if you're going to change it, that could affect his residential. Play him if he has one. And obviously, he did because he had to change from industrial to residential.
Are all of these in the overlay district?
Yeah.
So none of these can be used?
Right.
I would like to know, John, you know, which, how many can? You know, and I know you can't do that tonight.
No, but all these can. I mean, yeah, you can put it all together. It'd take about two hours. But basically, you know, it's over 60%. Maybe even close to 80% of the overlay district technically can't be used.
Pretty much everything.
Well, you're going to, to have this hearing, you're going to have to notify all those people that will be.
Matter of fact, if you really want to get into this, there is existing one. There's an existing one that probably doesn't.
It's clean.
Doesn't comply.
So how's it, how did it get approved?
Why doesn't that?
Because that's, that's state forest land right there.
Oh, it's a swamp.
So that's probably okay.
Let me get over here.
Abutting state forests, nobody's living in the forest.
Right here, that's state forest land right there.
You know, you put your foot in and you get a little bit more, then you got to go a little bit more, then you got to go a little bit more. That's what we're going to experience.
That's technically.
It'll be interesting.
That's technically a non-conforming location.
So that's next week.
It's not going to end.
I think your first approximation was probably right.
Oh, yeah.
I think they're probably close to zero.
Right.
That are.
You know, the problem, the problem is 300 feet is a long distance. You know, 100-foot buffers are, you know, more of the norm. You know, when you start putting 300 feet or 500 feet or 1,000 feet, you just eliminate, you know, the use. And that's it. And 300 feet here does a number.
So within, so if there's a football field separation, which is 300 feet to the building, does the planning board have the authority? This is an exaggeration just for me to try to figure out. Does the planning board have the authority to say that 300 feet is going to be all vegetated?
No, it's just that it's from the building.
There's a special permit granting authority.
It's from the building.
There's a special permit, right?
Every one of them.
To the use.
So we have a lot of leeway in terms of enforcing the buffer and trying to be consistent with zoning.
None of the building is going to take up the area.
Well, it's 300 feet between the buildings.
Building and the property lot.
Now, you only have 150 feet on one, potentially 150 on the other lot line. Imagine two rectangles. I have a 300-foot separation between buildings. So 150 feet on one parcel, 150 on the other.
So, I mean, to John's, to John's point with 150 feet, I mean, 100, 100-foot, you know, heavily replanted, you know, buffer.
Would be a big buffer.
Pretty substantial.
Absolutely.
But, you know, I don't know how it works with the emotional. If not, if you require them to do it right.
It's a wasp.
Costs a lot of money.
Okay, I'll, I'll defer to what you're saying, yeah.
Why do you wake up? It's a wasp running around.
I just, I just, there's going to be the emotional component, though, to the people who are the residential. You even understanding that, it's, it's, you know, you've got kids and whatever. There's going to be an emotional reaction to it.
Yeah, that's going to be very heated.
Well, we'll see if, we'll see at the, at the hearing. And, and, you know, usually at hearings, nothing happens because no one's here. And then we see what happens when we go to town meeting. And that's when people stand up and.
The pitchforks come out.
And they come back.
And I'm sure the wisdom of town meeting will prevail.
So we're going to have a fun discussion next week.
Well, it will definitely prevail.
Yeah, and you know what? I'll, I'll work on putting a map together so that, yeah, a color-coded map for everybody.
You should let the proponent do that.
With measurements.
Why, why wouldn't the proponent do that?
Proponent?
The proponent?
Aren't we the proponent?
We're the proponent.
Well, the town, you know, the, the town does stand to prosper to the tune of a million dollars annually as, as a recognizable reality.
We have a bylaw that prohibits most development.
Even the existing one.
That one I don't understand. I mean, I do understand.
No, there's a, there's a provision that state forests do.
Recreational area? State forest?
Yeah, but that's.
Recreational area you're thinking of.
Yeah.
What is the state requirement?
500 feet.
500.
So this is like.
Less than that.
We're opening our arms.
Yeah.
We don't have to buy by the state.
It's getting closer and closer to homes.
The other thing to understand too.
The towns can make their own decisions.
It's the retail use. That's the issue. It's selling to the general public and, you know, that's where you need the distance. More so, all these other uses, none of them are retail.
They're just cultivating.
Yeah, they're just cultivating.
Not even growing it.
And it's not like there's orders or anything that ever emanate from those buildings.
Yeah. That, I mean, this real, this, who knows if this is gonna pass, but in one regard, it needs to pass in, in one respect. Because it, it definitely was not intended to go this way. Because the overlay district, it has shrunk tremendously. And, you know, in, for many properties that have already been sold and planned for, they're not gonna be able to go forward.
Doesn't the bylaw?
It's, it's some, some legal matters.
I remember that the bylaw specifically saying that they, the, the process is that they should cite it and make sure it can be cited. It was step two, I think.
Yeah.
Step two.
Yeah, it's their problem in a way.
Town floor is gonna be interesting. Who's gonna do that?
We, John, quick question. When you said.
I wonder.
When you said that the state forest land.
I need to rehearse it.
Is land that we can't approach. I don't see that on, I mean, on page five of the eligible locations.
Because one of them cites a state statute, one thirty-eight, section twelve.
Oh, okay.
You know, stuff like that, that's.
It's a liquor store.
But that's any established.
No, there's another one in here.
Established license. Correctional facility.
Public park? Does that qualify as a state forest?
No.
Pass of recreational purposes?
Better ask the building inspector. Cause I mean, if he's saying that the apartment's not residential.
Yeah, I know, it's like.
No, 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 no. It's not that it isn't residential. It's not, it's not in a residential district.
Unless you have like.
Not in a.
Yeah, but you're changing.
You know what? This law needs to be changed because this law should state in all residential uses in residential districts or otherwise.
Yes.
Okay.
It's the residential use.
I thought it said.
So then they.
Residential district or use.
Nope. Any residential district as defined by chapter one sixty-five.
So the apartments, if that passes, the apartments is too close.
Residential district is defined as a residential district.
What, I'm sorry, I missed.
If the, if that passes, the way it's written.
Goes across the street from the apartment.
The apartments.
Are too close.
Are residential. And you measure from that building to where this area is.
No, John's saying that.
No, the resident, it's not a residential district.
It's not a residential.
But if it passes, it will be buildings, residential buildings.
No, it doesn't even count.
No.
That's not, I don't think that's part of this.
They don't even exist as buildings. Cause they're not resident, they're not in a residential zone.